I'd like to open the Town of Fairfax Regular Meeting and also the Special Town Council Meeting, and it is 6:30. And we are at Wednesday, March 6, 2024. We're at the Fairfax Women's Club, 46 Park Road, Fairfax, California. And with that, oh, great. Let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
Councilmember Hellman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Here.
Mayor Kohler.
Here.
And for those walking in the room, Councilmember Cutrone will not be able to join us till 7:30. And before I have a motion for approval of the agenda, I'd like to make a few changes. I'd like to stay with item two and then move to, let's do, excuse me. Okay, let's do open time for public expression first. And then depending, we'll probably do item two, the GHG emissions presentation. And so let's, okay, I'm sorry, I'm a little verklempt today, is let's do open time for public expression first, and then we'll move item four, 80 Crest Road, up before other items, and then we'll move on to the GHG emissions presentation. Is that acceptable to my fellow council members? And if so, I'd like a motion to make those changes.
I'll make a motion to, for the following agenda changes, sequence in sequence. The open time for public expression will go first, then item four, 80 Crest Road, then item two, the GHG emission, and regular agenda from there.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a second?
I second it.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Hellman, Vice Mayor Blash, and could we have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. And before I open up open time, I want to make a couple of comments. But I also want to remind folks who were here a couple of weeks ago that we had some really unfortunate comments by people on Zoom. And just to let you know, there are organized groups that are doing these kinds of comments across the Bay Area, actually happening across the nation. And so we're aware that it may happen again. And I just want to let folks know who aren't aware that this is, the intent is to terrorize people and say very uncomfortable things. So with that, before I begin open time tonight, I'd just like to say that I would appreciate it if speakers would refrain from using profanity and/or disparaging people based on race, religion, orientation, or country of origin. While I'm aware that our ability to silence these types of comments is constrained by the Brown Act and the First Amendment, I'm asking everyone to please be civil and refrain from such disparagement in your comments. What I can do, however, is disconnect anyone whose comments disrupt the orderly conduct of our meeting and/or absent appropriate findings or not under the council's subject matter jurisdiction or are not germane to the topic or matter being discussed. Should I determine an individual's comments are not within the council's subject matter jurisdiction or are disruptive to the orderly conduct of the meeting, I will be disconnecting that individual from making further comments. As well, should we have any disturbances in the room that are disruptive to the orderly conduct of the meeting, I will not hesitate to take a break and clear the room. I will ask everyone in the room and on Zoom to remember what I just said before I take public comments on agenda items or on the consent calendar as well. And before we do that, I would like to go ahead and read the land acknowledgement. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. Now for the meeting protocol, which is in addition to what I've already read, the mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and are ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place them in the silent mode. The town council will review the agenda at 10 o'clock PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. And I want to remind folks that most of us are neighbors here, so let's be kind to each other and respectful of everyone's opinions. So with that, I'm going to open open time for public expression. This will be up to 30 minutes. If we go longer than 30 minutes, and we'll do half in the room and half on Zoom, if we go longer than 30 minutes, we'll move the rest of open time to the end of the agenda. This is the time to address the council on matters not on the agenda. All comments are limited to two minutes. The council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any un-agendized item. Government Code Section 549, 54-2, or period 2. If there are still raised hands after 30 minutes, open time will be continued to the end of the agenda. So with that, let's start open time and remember, folks, you have two minutes. Thank you.
I'd like to first ask the Town of Fairfax to join the most progressive cities and towns across America to call for a permanent ceasefire in Palestine. What's happening there is tragic. I ask that of this town. Secondly, I want to come before you. My name is Kendra Scott. I live on Spruce Road, and I've been coming before you for every few months, for a couple of years now. In fact, over the past 20 years, neighbors on Spruce Road have been coming before you with the very same public nuisance complaints of dust, noise, and visual blight from our neighbor Fairfax, Ace Lumber. We have asked you, our elected representatives, to help us in every manner we know how, but to no avail. After finally having a new fence negotiated with a final approval from the Planning Commission given in September of 2023, we thought, albeit molasses slow, some progress was being made. Then once again, silence. So yes, we are frustrated, to say the least. Our families are getting sick. We want our town to enforce ordinances that are put into place. Specifically, we are asking for immediate abatement of the following: dust management. This entails paving the existing driveway in the yard and implementing measures to relocate and cover the bulk bins to minimize the spread of toxic dusts in our residences. Fairfax Town Ordinance 1.12.010: Emission of Noxious Fumes or Odors. Two, Noise Reduction. Ace's weekly deliveries often occur at dusk or even earlier. There's another disturbing the peace. I'm running out of time, so I will go to our third issue, which is installation of the new fence. The current rusty barbed wire fence is both unsightly and poses a safety hazard. It's a substandard or dangerous property condition, and it's also the property owner's responsibility to fix that.
Thank you.
Please listen to us. We're asking for your help.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Lily Horn, Spruce Road. I am a 20-plus, what are we on, 24-year resident. We've been having continuing issues on Spruce Road. These issues are causing considerable frustration for many of us, as you all know. We've maintained patience for hope with your involvement in addressing these longstanding issues with Ace and Fairfax Lumber: toxic dust, noise, 5:00 AM or earlier, a fence that's horrible to look at, safety risk, and a visual blight. Our health concerns are genuine and ongoing. Many minors and adults have serious asthma problems. We're not naming all of the minors at this point, but our families are united in this. So our health concerns are genuine and ongoing, and we anticipated a level of community collaboration on this project, and we're looking forward to more of that. We haven't seen that, so we're really looking forward to the dust abatement as well as the fence. We ask you once again for your help in questioning when these issues will be addressed. The second point that I would like to state is respectfully, I am vehemently opposed to what is happening with the rent control legislation.
Okay, that's a separate item.
Item on the agenda?
Correct.
Can I just voice during this time?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, just for items not on the agenda, I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council. Joe McGarry, Fairfax. I'm going to speak about the town's response to international tragedy and our capacity for empathy as a community. We've all witnessed the killing of over 30,000 Palestinians over the last five months at the hands of Netanyahu's violent Israeli army. Seventy percent of the murders have been women and children. Almost 2 million people in Gaza have been displaced. With the deaths from starvation now increasing daily, there are over 1,000 Palestinian children who have been killed before reaching their first birthday. In 2022, we saw the invasion of Ukraine by Russia, another international tragedy unfolding in front of us. A local restaurant had a campaign that raised money and awareness. Blue and yellow were everywhere in Fairfax. Ukrainian flags were hanging in literally hundreds of windows, and one Ukrainian flag was even hoisted at Town Hall. The Town of Fairfax passed a call for peace resolution that included a demand for a ceasefire. It was an incredible community display of empathy for an ethnic group that was under siege by a military superpower. Fairfax stepped into its historical identity of pacifism and unwavering value for human life. It begs the question, why is there such silence in our town right now as there is a genocide happening in Gaza? Why no fundraisers, no Palestinian flags, no ceasefire resolution? Is it the threat of being labeled anti-Semitic if we call for an end to the bombing? Or is it because we are a white community who have a deeper capacity for empathy for Ukrainians who look like us than we do for Palestinians? I don't know the answers, but it's past time the questions were asked out loud so that we can reflect and discuss why our community has responded so differently to these two horrifically similar international tragedies. Angela Davis calls Palestine "the moral litmus test for the world," and I fear our town's outward response is failing that test right now. Let today be the day we begin to stand with Palestinians like we did with Ukrainians. We are now free Palestinians.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Alan E. Andrini. I just wanted to introduce myself and say I'm with Westmore and Little League, and I just wanted to say thank you to the council members, councilpersons, Blash and Cutrone and Stephanie.
And Hellman. Councilmember Hellman.
For being so receptive. I'm looking forward to coming back in April. You know, the campers, it's a very complicated issue, but I just wanted to introduce myself and say thank you for being receptive and engaging with me and giving us an opportunity to just, I don't know, work the process and do what we all do, trying to make our community as best it can be. So thank you, and we'll see you in April.
Thank you. We look forward to the parade on Saturday.
Yeah, please, come out. Great, and I'm sorry I'm under dress.
You don't need to dress up. Thank you for coming. Next speaker, please.
Frank Egger from the Cascades. Downtown parking, is it a premium? That Handhouse Brewing Company, the site is at 700 Block of Center Boulevard, has been vacant now for almost four months. They have a parklet there. It's taking up three parking spaces. It's been sitting there empty. And I don't know, does Fairfax have a deposit for the cost of removal for parklets in town? Should someone abandon a parklet? How does it ever get removed? Is it there permanently, or what? I don't know. So I'm just requesting that the town address that vacant parklet issue and perhaps give back the three parking spaces to Center Boulevard. Another item, Measure F passed last night in San Anselmo by almost a 2 to 1 margin.
Okay, we don't do politics here?
You know, that's fine. I'm just telling you, Fairfax residents are preparing an initiative similar to San Anselmo with the same attorney right here for Fairfax. I'm asking you if you'd rather prepare a resolution to remove Fairfax from the Ross Valley Flood Control District Number 9, or should we go ahead with an initiative and remove Fairfax for you? That's the question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, Fairfax, and hello, council, missing Councilmember Cutrone. My name's Todd Greenberg. Glad to be alive for as long as I can be alive while people are being killed here in Fairfax and harmed and having their homes taken from them by the actions of this council. I don't know how long it's going to go on where the price of everything just keeps going up and up with the actions of this council. I guess you just can't see it, what you're doing. I'm dismayed that the "back to basics" theme that the mayor took office under promise of his not being honored, that there was a major problem trying to get a mattress picked up, or at the tone you've lectured us about civility. The tone that I've heard, that I've seen in writing, coming from this mayor to tax-paying constituents, is shocking. It's not a two-way street. If you want respect, you need to give respect. Can I let that sink in? Because we're not getting respect. The people of Fairfax are not being respected in so many ways. Unless this council thinks it's a ruling junta, things need to change. Am I out of time? I've got another 21 seconds. Thank you for not interrupting me for the first time in a long time. I'm shocked at the censorship that's going on. I'm not sure if you're monitoring different speech organizations for freedom of speech, but some of what this council is doing, I believe, is illegal.
Thank you, Todd. Next speaker, please.
Mark Belt, Fairfax. What, there's five items on the agenda, but public expression's only two minutes? So the mayor says we don't do politics? What are we doing sitting here in this place right now? It's politics. Somebody brings up an issue that's obviously affecting a community close by, which could have an effect on us. Why is that shut down? Why do you say no politics? This whole thing is politics. Your two minutes is politics. Your two-minute limit. What is it, 14 items on the consent calendar, given two minutes to speak to is politics? Shutting down this woman who wanted to talk about the rent ordinances, what's on the consent calendar, which of course you will not pull regardless of what the public requests, is one small part of the rent control ordinance. So you shut down this woman who was just up here for like, what, one hundredth of a percent? And you cut her off? This whole thing is politics. You ran for office. You ran for office. It's politics. You sit up there and you're thinking about your next term. That's politics. You're making your liaisons wherever. It's politics. And for my 11, 12 seconds left, if anyone wants to clap, you have 10 seconds. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to clear the room. No clapping, no hissing, no stamping, no talking when other people are talking. And Mark, you do not have the ability to tell people what to do with your 12 seconds. Thank you. Next speaker. Please be quiet. I'm going to clear the room if you don't stop. Okay, let's clear the room. We'll take a break for 10 minutes.
That's really a bully action.
And please, leave the room. Everyone, leave the room. Okay, folks, we'll take the next speaker now.
Thank you, Barbara. I also want to really ask what open time is about, because open time gives the opportunity for a community member to come up and speak about something that they feel is important to the community. And last month, when I brought up, for instance, Measure A, you tried to shut it down because of politics, when all I want to do is educate people for the financial allocation and the restriction of inter-district transfers, and you shut that down because you don't support the narrative against.
No, I don't support campaigning at the.
It wasn't campaigning.
It was.
No, I'm not part of that.
Okay, go ahead with the rest of your comments.
But Mark was really correct. We're here to bring forth a narrative, but what I see every time when the narrative is not supported by the town council, there's this effort to remove us. In fact, when the police department was asked to remove us, depending on if we clapped or made noise, the police department had a meeting with Heather and Janet saying foul don't do.
The police department was not here for that.
Please don't put words in my mouth. I never said that.
Police were not here for that.
Oh, they were here to enforce means because you're insecure. And speaking to the police, you're interrupting again, speaking to the police, there were requests to follow the council member's home because you're so insecure about the ordinances of the rent control and just cause, which is a further expense of public funds. Maybe you should work with the community so you're not also scared.
So this is not with, this is an item on the agenda.
Hold on, isn't this my open?
Michael, I'm going to cut you off because you're not staying with an open time.
Because I am. I'm talking about the whole process and our right to our freedom of speech and assembly, and that people come forth to try to share something and opinion. And just like your interruptions to me, you try to shut it down when it doesn't support your narrative. And I really wish you would reconsider that position, because you've disenfranchised so many people in our town that they don't want to come here and speak. And we want to encourage that speech so that you guys have the opportunity to hear different perspectives.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Rick.
Hi, Madam Mayor and Council, everyone else. I want to expand to let you know that Mr. Egger is not the only person concerned about the parklets and their effect on our streets. In this past month, we had, speaking of flood control, we've had flooding which was due to surface flow. Flood does not just occur from the watershed down the watercourse, the main watercourse. There are tributaries and watercourses along storm drains, and the parklets have an effect on that. And the effect of flood and erosion starts anytime that there's an accelerated flow of water, even on our streets. Several years ago, we had programs for permeable pavement. That was a big deal. We made a big deal about it. We even had a demonstration project up there by the lower pavilion parking lot. I think we should restore that type of mindset so that we bring back nipping water flow in the bud, and part of that would be to prevent gutter flow along the water, along the curbs and under these parklets. They're clearly not been engineered to accommodate that because they basically put up with very little permitting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone. Candace, Fairfax. I have a few topics I'd like to cover. One, I wasn't sure, but after today, I was able to take a good look. There is some kind of underground leak over by the Bank of America building on the road. It is now running pretty consistently, and the way it's coming down, I feel like it might be an irrigation break in the ball field, but it hasn't stopped. And I've been checking it in between the reins to see once the runoff came out. It's pretty significant. I'm not sure how many gallons per minute, but I would highly recommend someone go take a look. It's in between the curb and the road, basically that concrete foot and a half borderline between asphalt and concrete, pretty close to the stairs going up to the ball field. I wasn't sure if I was going to come tonight. I was pretty burned out after last meeting last week. It was pretty down or pretty sad. You have a lot of people reaching out to you all with how they feel about different things and then just continuing on the same track, and I understand you believe you're doing what's right, and I respect that. But I'm feeling just such a huge disconnect for the people that want to help our town or be a part of our community or our town politics or town works or anything. People do feel disenfranchised. Look at the voter turnout yesterday. I mean, man, that's pretty painful. 30,000 out of 175,000 registered voters, Marin County. So I'm just, I'm ploring all of you. I understand you're frustrated as well and that you're feeling in ways threatened. Well, that's how your constituents are feeling as well. So until we can all come together at the table and really talk, whether it's our open minutes or us personally or how it works, we've really got to think about it. Morale is crashing, at least from the people I'm talking to in town. And it runs all the way. So anyway, thank you.
Candace, we'll have staff look into that, but if you can put online, there's a place online for you to put the maintenance on there. We'll have Lauren look into it, but if you could also do that, that will make sure that we don't miss that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I think we need to go to Zoom now. We've gone a little more than 15 minutes, not counting the break that we took. Okay?
There's one speaker on Zoom. Philip, you are unmuted.
Hi there. I just want to chime in on what a number of people have already stated, and that is, by my count, there's been at least five or six references to politics tonight. And I believe that politics is a very appropriate thing to speak about, no matter what you're really talking about, whatever side you are on, whatever particular issue there is. So I would, I guess I'll be number seven here, saying that politics should be included. I do have a question that came up a number of times last week, and I wanted to know if there was an answer to it. And the question is if there is a significant definition of the thinking was. I heard both the town attorney and the planning director use that last week a number of times. The quote is "the thinking was," and then they answered the question. And I wonder if there is some meaning behind that that laypeople such as myself don't understand, because I heard it a number of times. And that's it. And thank you for, you know, what you do. I know it's difficult, and I'll speak later about the item that I want to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Are there any more speakers on Zoom?
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay. Closing open time. I just want to mention to folks, I know there are folks that are here who have said they feel disenfranchised. I will tell you that I've talked to a number of folks who won't come to these meetings anymore because, even on Zoom, because they feel that they're being disrespected for their opinions. It's intimidating enough. It's intimidating enough, many of you are really good at speaking at these meetings. But I can tell you, um, most people, it's, it's really intimidating, it's really difficult, so we want people to attend and I think we want to let everyone speak. What I've said before is we can't do campaigning here, I'm not campaigning for my next run should I choose to do it. And we can't talk about campaigning, but let's try very hard because a lot of people are turned off and are not willing to come anymore. And I think that's a sad testament, there are folks who may not agree with some of you. Um, but let's try to be polite as much as possible. So with that, um, we're gonna move on to item four, which is eighty Crest Road. Appeal of a planning commission denial of a height variance for an unpermitted ground floor level that will result in the height of the residential structure being approximately fifty feet. Assessor's parcel number zero zero two dash one five two dash three two. Residential single family RS six zone Verley and Marine Sorgan app- appellants owners sequoia categorically exempt. Section fifteen three oh one E two one. And this would be for Linda Neal and Janet Coulson. But I want to say that I understand there have been some discussions and potential negotiations that may achieve some resolution. And so I would suggest that in order to allow those discussions to continue, um, we give it a little time and we continue this matter to April third, which is our next regular town council meeting. And I would ask my colleagues if they agree with that, um, would somebody make a motion to continue this item to April third?
I'd make a motion to continue it till April third.
Would somebody like to second?
Yes, I'll second that, I, I agree.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Blash and second Councilmember Ackerman, could we have a roll call vote, Madam Burke?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes, and I want to thank the Sorgans and their daughter Sasha, Ms. Sashi for coming as well as their attorney, Mr. Ellis Raskin. And we look forward to hopefully productive discussions and bringing this back April third. So thank you for coming and appreciate you uh sitting so patiently, thank you. So let's move on and we're gonna move on to receiving our two thousand twenty-two Fairfax G H G inventory report and presentation. And originally, this would be our climate action coordinator, Sean Ura, and the sustainably sustainability coordinator for Marin Climate and Energy, Christine O'Rourke. And I understand that Christine had a family emergency is now out of state. So uh, take it away, Sean Ura. Oh, there you are.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council, yeah, fortunately Christine couldn't make it, but I will uh, present this short um greenhouse gas inventory report, I think you all kind of understand the gist of these now, we do them every year. Um, so it's pretty.
Okay, um, just sorry to interrupt you, Sean, but um, it's a little hard to understand you on Zoom, so maybe um, speak closer to your mic, I'm not sure. Sorry to interrupt.
Is that, is that any better?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Christine, uh, could you, it says, um, I don't, I'm not able to share my screen, I'll pull up the presentation.
Did that help?
Yes, I'm able to now, thanks. Okay, can you all see that okay?
Yes, thank you, Christine, maybe you can minimize, uh, oh no, we want to see Sean, thank you, go ahead.
All right, um, so like I was mentioning, uh, you know, these greenhouse gas inventory reports are done for um all the Marin jurisdictions each year. Um, and they help us monitor the progress we're making um to reduce greenhouse gas emissions community wide. Um, and uh, occasionally every several years, we'll also um track our municipal emissions. Um, but this latest report for the twenty twenty-two emissions um just covers the community, community-wide emissions. Um, so this is the breakdown of the different emission sources. And uh, you know, not much has changed since uh the previous uh twenty twenty-one report. Um, I think one of the notable things to, to see here is that uh emissions from the electricity sector continue to decline, um, thanks to PG&E and MCE's efforts to, you know, add more renewable energy to their um, to their portfolios. Um, so as of twenty twenty-two, uh, the um emissions from uh electricity from PG&E and MCE was ninety-five percent greenhouse gas free. And so um, it's great to see that that sector is being decarbonized, continues to be decarbonized. Um, and is um, represents a pretty small portion of the missions now for, for Fairfax. Um, which basically leaves transportation and then natural gas used in buildings, both residential and commercial here in town, um, and transportation continues to remain the number one source of emissions um at fifty-six percent of the total. So Fairfax continues to make good progress um in terms of reducing emissions um community-wide. Um, we've been tracking these uh emissions since two thousand five. And since two thousand five, um, emissions have been reduced by about thirty-one percent. And if you compare that to the estimated nineteen ninety levels, it's down by nineteen percent. Um, so um, you know, in terms of meeting some of our, the local and state goals, um, you know, we, we are making good progress towards hitting that twenty thirty state goal, um, which is a forty percent reduction um below nineteen ninety levels. Um, and then the state also has a twenty forty-five goal of reducing emission, uh, you know, re- reducing emissions statewide by eighty-five percent. Um, and then Fairfax has its um zero emissions goal by twenty thirty as well. So this just covers some of the sector highlights um since two thousand five, so like it meant, like I mentioned, the uh, electricity emissions um have, have really declined the most um by ninety percent due to that lower carbon intensity of the electricity. Um, natural gas emissions used in buildings are, is down by eleven percent. And um, I think that's mostly a, a combination of both, you know, better energy efficiency in, in buildings and also electrification of, of buildings, uh, but if the actually based on natural gas use, you know, your, year over year. Um, vehicle, vehicle miles traveled um has gone up slightly by three percent, so that just means there's more trips, you know, happening in Fairfax. Whether it's um, commercial vehicles or passenger vehicles um uh originating or, or ending in, in the town. Um, but despite that, transportation emissions have still declined by eighteen percent. Um, again, mainly due to better fuel efficiency of vehicles, more zero emission vehicles on the market or at more registered zero emission vehicles here in Fairfax. Um, and across Marin County. Um, so in twenty twenty-two, there was seven point five percent zero emission vehicles, so those include, you know, your battery electric vehicles, hybrids, um, fuel cell electric vehicles. Uh, so across county, uh, we're at, we were at seven point five percent in twenty twenty-two. And Fairfax is at six point two percent in twenty twenty-two in terms of those uh registered vehicles. And uh, waste disposal, uh, we've, we've made a lot of progress in terms of uh weight, both waste reducing our, our overall um waste disposal that ends up in landfill and the associated, associated emissions from that. Um, so waste disposal is down twenty-five percent and um the emissions are down close to fifty percent. Um, so that uh, some of our efforts to, you know, make sure people are properly sorting their waste, you know, composting, organic waste, um, and implementing the state law, SV thirteen eight three, um, you know, all those are starting, we're starting to see the impact of that, um, so that's also good to see. Um, overall, uh, best opportunity still um is to electrify the uh buildings and transportation, um, because as I mentioned, if our electricity sector is mostly decarbonized at this point, um, that means when you plug in your vehicle or you use a um, electric appliances in your home or building, um, that's running from clean energy or sourced from clean energy. Um, so um, the town can, needs to continue to focus um on those sectors to continue to make progress in reducing emissions overall. And that's it, I'm happy to take any question.
Okay, did anyone on the council have questions for Sean?
Yes, Sean, thank you. Uh, just one question that, that occurred to me just as you were speaking just now, that the uh, and I, I saw in the larger report that's in, in our packet that you also are, Christine also provided us with the metrics with it, with a graph over time of vehicle miles traveled exclusive of the emissions or the type of vehicle, just vehicle miles traveled. But uh, I was just realizing that in terms of the methodology that we usually use for this, as you've, as you've outlined, where you separate household and uh, transportation, there's, at this point with uh, electric vehicles being charged, if, if people are charging electric vehicle at home, that would end up being on the household emissions side. Uh, as is currently, as the methodology currently pulls it out, even though the uses for transportation, is that correct?
I think I missed the, the first part of what you said, because it froze up, but, but is the question basically where the, if for electric vehicles, where those emissions?
That with the electric vehicles being charged, if an electric vehicle is being charged at home, that's going to show up in, in this methodology, that's going to show up as a household uh use of electricity as opposed to our transportation. Yeah, I just, just noticing that in terms of methodology, maybe over time that'll need to be looked at. But uh, thank you, and, and uh, I was just gratified also to see that we're making progress, uh, pretty good progress on the methane that is emitted from waste from the landfill. Uh, as you said, due to better sorting and we in this county have such a great opportunity to sort it and just put it in the green bin rather than the gray bin. Uh, you can really save a lot of methane that way, so good to see that that's being quantified and that we're making progress on it, thank you.
Thank you, any other council members have questions of Sean? Uh, seeing none, uh, we'll take public comment, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I do, is this our last time we're gonna see you?
Let's, let's do that at the end. Okay, so uh, let's take public comment on this item and everyone will have two minutes if they'd like to comment, please. Todd.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. I'm just wondering if you've got any eye on the cost that you're imposing on this town, on San Anselmo and on Marin. Wondering if you can inform the public how much PG&E's rates went up on averages last year and how much they plan to raise them this coming year? And how much the cost is greater now with electric vehicles? And I'm wondering if you can inform the public accurately about why the major vehicle manufacturers are drastically cutting their EV production and why the population is apparently buying more hybrids and why you aren't recommending hybrid purchase rather than expensive electricity consuming purchase? Then the other thing that I'll put in that uh, as long as we're banning things in Fairfax, as long as we're talking about methane production, maybe you could explain why we shouldn't be banning frijoles and beans and burritos if they're producing methane. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please. Mark.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. Few questions, uh, number one, I sit on how you can figure out a metric uh, as far as transportation pollution for the people who drive here to do work like gardeners, roofers, et cetera, and people driving through town to go to West Marin or vice versa? And how that affects the air quality in Fairfax? Another question is who actually was involved in this study? Is this, I know I read in the report that, you know, it comes from the county of Marin and that we, as a town, Fairfax signed on to it, but I'd like to know who actually was involved. Did you partake in this study, uh, since you have a position at two towns if I recall correctly? Uh, another question is, there are sure are a lot of power outages. And so, you know, when people fire up their gas generators because they have no power, because they're freezing, because they want to cook something, uh, so they fire up their propane or charcoal uh barbecues, what is that doing for the actual environment? Uh, another question is if natural gas is so bad, then why are six natural gas plants being built to generate electricity? I mean, you could be cynical like I am and think that PG&E is trying to cut down on the the, the, on the demand for people to have uh, to use natural gas so that they can get a better price on it, burn it to create electricity and then they can just jack up your electric rates, which they've been doing. So those are some of the questions I'd like to have answers for, thank you.
Uh, thank you, and next speaker, please.
Low Town Council, Michael McIntosh. I've seen this town council in San Anselmo bar all of our fire mitigation tools, I've seen our fire insurance canceled, certainly something to consider, but I do have a question for you too, because I'm always entertained when I see this. I don't know how frequently you guys drive past um the medium long miracle mile. But to save money from bending over and pulling over weeds, San Anselmo has a contractor out there with a guy with a big fuel tank on his back torching all the weeds. So I would assume that fuel being burnt would certainly be against our ordinances, but I actually find it entertaining every time that I see this guy, including this morning, burning off the weeds so he doesn't have to pick them up. I think there should be consistency. I'm not a big fan of hearing all these models which are assumptions, but there's no way to determine what is really producing this unless you look at a more holistic approach. And I do think the extraction of certain elements in the earth, we're not doing a good job basically making another shift for the electric vehicles, I think a hybrid or salt oxide fuel cell is a much better implication that's going to not continue to hurt our earth. So I think there's better options than just jumping to first the curly light bulb. You can smile all you want, but look how efficient the curly light bulb was. Okay, we threw that away, it's now contaminant in our environment because of materials that has. So it's something to consider that there are better options, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers in the room? Candace?
I think it's a great idea to want to be able to sustain on just electricity and be able to lower impacts to the environment. But unfortunately, as we all know, living in Fairfax, look at the power outages of just this year, twenty twenty-four, but look at twenty twenty-three. So let's say your vehicle charged electrically and there was a fire, power was cut due to winds touching a line and your vehicle can't get out of Fairfax. And your vehicle can't get out of Fairfax because you don't have power to charge it. I, I've personally spent two years looking at putting in solar and investing that kind of money. It is a lot of money. It's not nominal, even with the tax rebates. And it all depends on what, how many trees you have over your house and which way your roof is facing and so there's just a lot of implications here that are not necessarily practical to the average person. Um, I think it's a great idea to keep trying to lower our emissions and do better for the town. But I think we got bigger things we need to worry about right now in our town. No offense whatsoever. Um, and I think that that's where the attention and money should be directed towards in this town. Yes, we want to get to being able to fulfill our electrical solar needs for all of Fairfax here. But we gotta deal with our roads, infrastructure, other things first. Um, and I just, I really, I appreciate these conversations, but as our mayor once said, he loves his Tesla. Well, I know I can't afford that. So I think there's just really some considerations to be made for the average person in Fairfax being able to afford this electrical world. Okay?
Thank you, Candace. Next speaker, please.
Just a quick question. Uh, Frank Hager from Cascades. Does Fairfax charge those who charge your E Vs downtown at the charging station? Do they have to put a credit card in or?
Yes.
And, 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 and Fairfax gets reimbursed for electricity that's, that's used on those chargers?
Um, when we're done, we'll ask our town manager. I believe she knows the question. I, I don't know that we get reimbursed. I think it goes to the company. But we'll ask that question.
Is it free electricity they're getting?
It's not free. Thank you. Um, any other speakers in the room? Um, are there speakers on Zoom? Uh, before we do that, um, uh, town manager Abrams. People have to pay for that. I mean, I have a neighbor who plugs in all the time and you pay for it. And I don't believe the town gets the money. I believe it goes to the company, right? How does that work?
So um, you, and I have done this myself, you um, put your credit card in and then there is a charge. Um, and that, then we are, the town is not providing free electricity. The town has wired that up, but it goes through the charge point system. We don't, um, uh, it's not to say that the town is providing free electricity to people for charging their cars is incorrect.
Okay, and does the money come back to the town or does it go to charge point?
Right, so it, the money goes into charge point and the um, town gets a rebate.
Okay.
And I, I have our finance director here as well and he's confirming that.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, are there speakers on Zoom?
There are two speakers on Zoom.
Okay.
The first speaker is Philip, followed by Jody. Philip, you're unmuted.
Hello again. I just wanna really give you guys a reality check. People, many, many people in this town cannot afford to convert to a hundred percent electric. Many, many people. And I know that's a stated goal and I know there are even uh, goals uh, to be met as we consider that question. But I did, I think you really need to know that. Um, and that's both for your home and, and cars for, for, for vehicles. The other thing I would point out um, about having electric cars is there's another cost that's not being looked at. And that is they weigh usually on, on average thirty percent, maybe and up to sixty percent on some of these vehicles. They're way heavier, so they're destroying our roads and our streets. Now, what are our roads and streets made out of? They're made out of asphalt. And that's a, uh, that's a petroleum product as far as I know. So I just think these are the kind of things you guys gotta think about. Not everybody can afford a Tesla. Not everybody can afford to renovate all of their gas elect, uh, uh, gas appliances out of their house. And I think what you're gonna see and find, especially on appliances, is people are just gonna do it without saying they're doing it. They're just gonna convert wherever they want and, and leave it at that. If they need a new hot water heater and an electric one is required and they can't afford it, they're just gonna get some guy to put it in for them. And it won't be looked at, it won't be seen if it's done properly, and that creates a hazard for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine, can you shut that? Oh, Michael. Can we shut the mic off? Oh, thank you. Thanks for getting up. Okay, next speaker, please. I think the next speaker was Jody.
The next speaker is Jody.
Okay.
Jody, you're unmuted.
Uh, good evening, council and staff. I just want to thank all of you um, to, for the support you've given to the community and to the Climate Action Committee and others in support of all the, all the things that need to be done to address uh, our existential crisis, climate change, which is obviously well beyond the scope of just our town. Um, but I also especially want to thank you, Sean. That was a great presentation. And it's been wonderful working with you for two years and having your support also to move a lot of things forward and it's a little discouraging to hear people who, it seems to me, don't really understand the depth of both the problems that we face and all the solutions. There, they, there are no simple solutions. They are expensive. We all know that. Um, the town and the state of California and this country um, are working hard to move us in a direction for future generations to live in a world that's as beautiful as the one most of us grew up in. So I just want to thank again the staff and the council and the mayor and the community um, for the support that is given around initiatives for climate change. We will be, the Climate Action Committee will be tabling soon and we invite people to come and chat with us about some of these issues. But many thanks to, um, to you, Sean, and to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Jody. Uh, more speakers on Zoom? Okay, seeing none. Bring you back. I, I want to mention something that um, we're not requiring people uh, with existing homes to change your water heaters or change your car. Uh, we do have an ordinance that requires for new construction, that it be electric. And that is where the state is going. So um, we understand that not everybody can afford to do these things, but uh, we are trying to save the planet, one little town at a time. So uh, comments by uh, any deliberative comments? I just want to say, Sean, I know you're leaving us. We appreciate the two years. I think your anniversary was Valentine's Day. And we understand you're going to Bayrend for bigger and better things. You have been so easy to work with and uh, really, you know, you worked with the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership, Christine, on this project and continue to keep us unfor, informed. So we really appreciate that. We'll do something proper at a subsequent meeting to thank you for your time with us and wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And hopefully you'll come to see us. Anyone else? Council member, Helen, did you want to say?
I just wanted to say best wishes and it's been a pleasure and I'm, I know our paths will cross again. Thank you.
Okay, with that, um, I would like to make another change in the agenda. And that would be to move item six, the annual progress report on the general plan and housing element for the calendar year twenty twenty-three to be our next item. And would somebody like, my fellow council members agree, would somebody make a motion to that effect?
So number six would be next and then number five?
No, number three would be after that.
Okay.
Okay.
Six, then three, then, then go on with five. Yeah.
Correct.
Um, I'll make that motion.
Okay, would somebody like to second that motion?
Sure, second.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Ackerman, second by Councilmember Hellman. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to item six. And I understand our, there he is. Uh, Jeff has a little bit of a cold, so he's saving us from all getting sick. We very much appreciate that, Jeff. So um, Jeff Byswinger, I believe this is your staff report. Take it away.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kohler and uh, town council. Yes, I don't think I can get you all sick through the, through the web, but you never know. So um, the, uh, first of all, this is called the General Plan and Housing Element Report. And so just to explain that a little bit, um, the housing element is, as you all know, is a component of the general plan. So it's really just a, a comprehensive report on the general plan. Um, and we're reporting to, uh, first of all, it's good practice, I think, to do this just so that the, the town kind of keeps track of the general plan and how the implementation is going. But there's also a couple of different state agencies that are interested in the report. Uh, the first is uh, O P R or the Office of Planning Research. Um, it's a part of the governor's office. And they are interested in kind of a general report on the full general plan and all of the elements. Um, so, and that has a little, that's a little bit, I not quite sure what best word to use, but maybe a little looser or a little less um, formal than the um, than the housing element report where there's a lot more flexibility in how it's reported. Um, so what we've chosen to do with that particular report is just have a, a kind of a broader running list of all of the um, programs that the town has implemented over like the last several years versus just the past year. Um, just so that we can keep track kind of over the years, how we're, how we're doing with the twenty um, ten to twenty thirty general plan and all of the elements. Then the second um, State Department that is interested is um, H C D or the Housing and Community Development Departments. And so that's the housing element report um, that we've all been working on. And that has a couple of different parts. It's not just about RINA, which is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. Um, they do like for us to report on the number of building permits issued for new housing units each year. And then also recently, they've wanted us to report on how many units are actually occupied or have their, or, and, and the way that that's determined is do they have their final inspection? So you know, so basically the home is ready to be occupied, whether or not it's occupied or not, but it has its final inspection. Um, and then we tally the, tally that up and put it in the, in the report. So those are kind of the two reports and they're, they're kind of, they run on different cycles. So the the, our general plan is from twenty ten to twenty thirty. Um, we do update it periodically based on need. But basically it has a much longer timeframe, whereas the, the housing element component of the general plan runs on eight-year cycles, which coincides with the uh, the RINA. So, and then we will be submitting this to H C D and O P R by April first of this year as, as they require. And so just to point out a couple of things with the report. The arena allocation for the twenty twenty-three to thirty-one ti- time period is four hundred and ninety units. Um, so, and we have five um, A D U's which were um, permitted and occupied in, or ready for occupancy in um, this year. And there's a little, there was a, a minor error in the original report that you received. There, it was all categorized as five very low, but it was really three very low and two low. Uh, what we do is um, we send out surveys to everybody that has built an A D U every year. And we ask them to kind of voluntarily tell us what their rent rate is. And so that allows us to determine whether it's affordable to a low-income household or a moderate income household or a very low-income household. So anyway, that's, so five total. Um, little bit of a slow start, but that's not unlike last arena cycle where we, we started out with only a couple of units and then we picked up speed later on. The other thing that we report on in terms of the, the housing element report is programs. So, and that's part of that uh, the attachment to the, the resolution, the, the second attachment. There's the RINA report and then also the list of housing element programs that we have implemented. And we have implemented quite a few this year. You know, and we've adopted many of the uh, code amendments that uh, that we said that we would adopt in the housing element. So we've accomplished that. We've adopted clear and objective development standards. We've also done some cleanup amendments that weren't um, taken care of in the past. Um, from the past housing element, which is code amendments to allow supportive housing, residential care facilities and other housing types. Um, and then we also, and then also work on the tenant protection efforts. So that's also in the um, housing element as well. The um, just to go through some of the other elements really quick and I won't, I won't go through every line in the table unless, unless you want me to, but um, the uh, the land use element, just something to note there is that we will be doing some updates to the land use element this year. Um, that's kind of a follow-up to the housing element. There's a, some uh, inconsistencies um, in our land use element that need to be updated to um, to be in line with the housing elements. So we'll be bringing those back to the, the council later on this year. There is also um, along those same lines, there will be amendments to the um, safety element, which have to deal with uh, new uh, fire safety requirements that the state has. And so we'll be bringing those back to the town council as well. And those are also uh, tangentially, I guess I would say related to the housing element. They're re, they're, they kick in when, when a jurisdiction does a housing element. And so we will be doing that this year as well. So we've already kind of started with both those efforts. And we have our consultant working on a kind of a work plan to um, do those uh, general plan amendments. Um, other than that, the, just to go through these, the um, the circulation element, we're not re, we haven't, we, we're not proposing any updates to the general plan. But that is a very important element for the town because that kind of guides our capital improvement program in which roads get repaved and worked on and bridges get repaired. And all of those types of things. So we need to have the um, the circulation element in good shape so that when we do get funding, um, we can point to our general plan and say, well, we're requesting this funding because we need to improve these roads. And those roads are identified as needing improvement in the uh, general plan. So we need to create that link back to the general plan um, for funding purposes. The other thing to point out, just real quick, and I'm just doing a real high-level review. So if you have any questions, um, when I get through here, feel free to ask. Um, we, the conservation element, um, since Sean was just on giving the um, um, climate action plan report, um, that is and related to and an outgrowth of our conservation element, which that, then that's where that kind of links back to the general plan is through the conservation elements. Um, and that was up, that was created a few years ago and then updated in twenty twenty-one. Um, the other thing to point out is the open space element. Um, we did do a little bit of implementation on that this year, we, with the adoption of the cluster zoning. Um, that's identified in the open space element um, back when it was adopted in twenty ten as an implementation program. So it took us a few years, but we finally adopted the ordinance, which actually implemented the twenty ten uh, program uh, related to cluster zoning. And also we are proposing to do a dark sky regulations this year, which also be covered in the open space element is generally um, improving the um, the, the open space environment. And with that, we would requesting that you adopt the resolution. And what the resolution does is it authorizes staff to submit their reports to O P R and to H C D. And so the resolution includes the two exhibits, the uh, progress table for the twenty ten to twenty thirty Fairfax general plan and the progress report for the housing element, which is primarily a spreadsheet. And so I have to apologize, that's why the detachment And so I have to apologize, that's why the, the attachment looks a little bit wonky and kind of cut up because we're, we have to be creative with how we print out the spreadsheet because otherwise the, the text and the numbers would be very small. And so we have to kind of zoom it up and then, and then chop it up into eight, eight and a half by 11 pieces of paper. So that's why it's split irregularly in your attachment. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, do council members have any questions for Jeff? Vice Mayor Blash?
Yeah, so I just wanted to check. You sort of mentioned, I think in the report, that there's been a little bit of a change of methodology in terms of how they count units achieved.
It used to be based on building permits. So when you issued the building permit, that is when you put, put it down in your RENA table and then that's, that would be your RENA requirement now. You actually have to get all the way through to a final inspection or an occupancy permit for it to be able to include it as part of the RENA.
Right, okay, so that would change our numbers a little bit from what they would be. Okay, and so, you know, I'm seeing that the ADU count was about eight last, the prior year and in terms of those that were permitted. And this year it's seven, so it's relatively close. Okay, and I mean, have they given any indication like how they're going to maintain consistency when they're sort of comparing over the years?
Well, that started, this is, since this is the new RENA cycle, they're starting with that at the beginning of the RENA cycle. So it'll be consistent for the whole RENA cycle, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And Jeff, I just want to mention, as you know, I, I submitted some detailed comments on the general plan report as far as expanding some of those things in the tables. And I just wanted to check if you're going to be able to accommodate those changes before this gets submitted.
Yes, we, we updated those changes. In fact, I think we, we provided a supplemental staff report which had those.
I don't think we have one.
No?
No.
Okay.
That's all right. I, I mean, those were, they remind you of some of the past things that we've done that give a little historical context and a little, a few corrections. And I think they're non-substantive, so I don't know that we need a supplement for that. But I don't, but I just wanted to check and make sure you were able to accommodate those changes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. So with that, I'd like to open it up to public comment. Everyone will have two minutes to comment.
Hi there, Todd Greenberg. Hi Jeff, how are you? I'm not sure if you're aware of Amy Kalish's work at Citizen Marin and Christine Epperali's talk that is available on video about RHNA and the flawed methodology on which these numbers are derived. I just want to make the public in this council aware that what you're doing by just caving into this, I understand you feel like your hands are tied, but you're using flawed methodology. And where there was a 20% inclusion rate, it is now being pushed down as low as 5%. And it's basically a mechanism to build market rate housing. That's something separate from, another thing I'd like to observe here. Councilwoman Blash has indicated, which wasn't in this report, that the prior year, there were eight ADUs. Well, seven's close, but one eighth is, I think, 16.6% drop from year to year. And the years prior were much greater. Yet this report is assuming that there'll be increased production with these onerous rent ordinances and continual cost increases that you keep heaping upon the good people of Fairfax. No one but the really wealthy will be building ADUs. No one. And you can see it. I would like you, when you do this report, my request is that you include the history, even though you're saying that HCD is starting over again. I think Rob Bonta would want to see that ADU production is being squelched. Rob Bonta, it would be very interested in this, I think. I think I also, I'll end it here.
Thank you, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Frank Iger from the Cascades. You know, instead of a he said, she said type of report, back in the day, the town's council always received a written monthly report from the building department, listing all building permits for new units, remodels, with addresses. Knowledge is power. And it's important the town council knows exactly what's going on in town. And you need to, to, to restart getting a monthly report from the building department on all your building permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. I'll be brief. I think the people would agree with me that they would like to know how much the town has spent so far on this housing element for this cycle up to this point. I mean, I'm guessing around one and a half million. And I realize that like Willets is a different ballgame. They're about half the size, they have a lot more area. But, you know, they did their housing element for $20,000. So I'm pretty curious as to what the town has spent on our two consultants plus sub-consultants plus sub-sub-consultants, change of consultants, et cetera. And the other question, really what Todd was saying was, you know, we've been here and listened to a robust program for how we're going to have like 20 ADUs a year. I mean, I counted five and what, two of those were going to be owner occupied. They weren't going to rent them, which of course brings up the question that Todd asked. Do you think this has anything to do with rent control? And just cause evictions that are totally out of line and unrealistic for anyone who would think about being a housing provider? That's it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Hi Jeff, Town Manager Abrams, council members. Kevin Curtis, I was the one who emailed you, Jeff, and Town Manager Abrams on 2/29 regarding if you had seen the letter sent to the Ms. Abrams on, from the state HCD dated 2/16, February 16th. That letter looks to directly correlate to the progress reports, which are on agenda right here tonight. And having completed items on numerous programs, one of them 2D, maybe even 1B, CDE, that letter specifically states it looks as though the review period has been closed for the subsequent or final draft that was submitted. And it looks as though a new public review period was opened today. However, that letter was never made public. It hasn't been talked about tonight as part of the briefing here. And if this, if the town is out of compliance at this time, it calls out several of the programs that are in this annual progress report that are called complete or completed. I'm not sure how that works and I was hoping for, maybe Jeff can make an explanation. And maybe you can also make an explanation of what that letter includes and what the current status is. Lastly, I also sent a notification on 2/29 to Town Manager Abrams, also referenced in a separate email to Jeff, that I requested to be on the notification list for the housing element and any changes and updates to it. But I didn't get any message that the public review period was open today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers in the room?
Hello, Town Council. Jeff, first thing I'd like to say, I think that's actually a pretty good presentation. And I think you actually did a better job than sometimes I've sat you, when you've sat here, so thank you. I also want to reiterate the concern about the ADUs. I really think that's a really false narrative that's being provided to HCD. I do think that the rent control laws are certainly going to diminish any outlooks for ADUs, which I think is in opposition to some of the laws that they want to see. I think if there's an open public period for comment on his final section and the town has withheld that more than bad form, it might extend that period for public comment. And I think the town should make that very public. I too have asked multiple times with even our prior planning directors to be advised of all notifications from HCD and this town just routinely does not provide it. So even the letter of, I think, August 16th, when HCD criticized this town, the only way I got that was from the following month's staff report buried at the bottom. You guys have a requirement to provide this to the public, especially when we make a formal request in writing and you guys just continue to only support your narrative and only give us that information what you want. These are the reasons that people don't trust you guys. If you'd be honest, we could actually come to better resolutions. But you don't give us a chance to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers in the room, Mallory?
Hi, a couple of things. One is you removed the Affordable Housing Committee before they met. This is part of the game that you guys play with us. And at least you're being honest about moving, removing the Affordable Housing Committee. I, I don't think that, I almost didn't come here because it's so frustrating to talk to people who don't listen, who don't respect what we're saying and we get thanked after we speak, but you don't mean this. And I would really like for you guys to do something differently and make us feel like there's at least some respect here and that you honor that we don't have an Affordable Housing Committee because you guys are making up all the, all the choices and we don't have choice here. And it's very frustrating.
Thank you. Next speaker, and Rick, if you're the last speaker, when you're done, if you could press the button.
Okay, copy that, Mayor, Madam Mayor, staff from the town. Ditto on what Mallory said, as you know, about Affordable Housing Committee. Ditto on, on us getting notice on these letters. We all knew and with great expectation, the state of, of February 16th would take us out of the builder's remedy. Everybody was sort of psyched about that. March 9th is the date that the WHO overlay is supposed to happen. But there was no indication, the letter that I, I included in my comment was not posted. And only today did I actually see the, some of the comments I would have made today. But I would start by saying that extrapolating the numbers that we have on the planning director's report of five times eight years, and we're already one year into an eight-year cycle, which means we only have seven years left, only means we'll come up with 40 of the 490 units unless some of these bigger projects get rolling. And, and I mean, we're, we're not talking about a house, a $1 million house. We're talking about $10 million projects here. And, you know, I'm a veteran of a lot of $10 million projects. And this is not a good way to start off. We really have to get rolling because we don't want to see another six months or whatever, three months. The, most of the comments I was going to make here, because I'm running out of time, because there is a comment section about how to evaluate some of the complaints I saw in this letter by HCD that said particularly the demonstration of sites of equivalent sizes, which, you know, I've been surveying in our towns and neighboring towns. But I'll just close real quickly. The county has a registry and they have a number of sites in Kentfield, which is a census designated place, which would help us get through that request of the letter of February 16th. Thank you.
Thank you. No other speakers in the room? Do we have speakers on Zoom?
There are two speakers on Zoom. The first speaker is Philip, followed by Kay. Philip, you're unmuted now.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Council, good evening. Some of you may believe in God or maybe even the Easter Bunny. Last week, Ms. Blash said she believes in rent control. The problem with beliefs is you need empirical evidence to back them up. Otherwise, it's just your belief. Rent control in Fairfax was given life by council members Hellman and Catrano. And what they created is a fear-based system. Tenants are afraid, housing providers are scared and homeowners are worried. The root of this fear and anxiety can be traced back to the process Catrano and Hellman took in creating rent control. They did not include critical stakeholders.
So we're not talking about rent control here. If you want to relate it to the HCD report, go ahead.
Well, it's in there. The rent control is in there. The, the planning director just said that it's included in what they got. So I think this is, this is relevant. And, and now you've taken 30 minutes of my, 20 seconds of my time. The last year and a half, the councils tried to tweak this into something palatable. And last week, you voted to spend what you characterize as a small amount of money. At the heart of option A is what's known as a reasonable rate of return. No one knows what a reasonable rate of return is or who will enforce it. Nobody knows how complicated the petition paperwork will be or how much documentation a hearing examiner will require. We know the petition will cost a housing provider $1,000, even if the tenant initiates the, the petition. That begs the question, what happens if a housing provider doesn't have the money? Again, nobody knows. You estimate the cost of the petition to be between $1,000 and $5,000.
Philip, I'm going to cut you off. This is not within the subject matter of this item, so I'm cutting you off. Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Kay. Kay, you are unmuted.
Hi, I just, so I'm reading through the staff report. And then, so in 2020, there were 13 permits for ADUs. In 2021, there were 12. In 2022, there were eight. And then in 2023, there were seven. So I remember you guys saying you're going to come back and look at housing and how important ADU population is. And we all know it's important. It's good for the environment. It's, you know, I mean, it's within a good footprint, yada, yada, yada. What, what's happening? Why does the town council and Jeff, the planning director, why are ADU permit numbers half of what they were in 2023? I don't, I'd love an answer for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Please stop clapping. Okay, other people on Zoom?
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, bringing it back. Before we do that, I want to let, welcome Councilmember Catrano and let you know what we've done is briefly, we moved the agenda around. So we took up item four, AD Crest Road, and we continued that to April 3rd. We also have heard the item two. We did open time and we've moved to item six, which is the annual project, progress report on the general plan and housing element. We'll next take up item three and next item five, just to get you up to speed. Thanks for joining us and understand you had a work conflict that you could not change. So we appreciate you joining us. All right, bring it back to the council. Any further comments? Vice Mayor Blash, I see your light on.
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up on some comments from the public. Are there any major housing developments that are being delayed at this point?
Well, I'll start and then allow Jeff to answer if there's anything he wants to add. But there are no housing developments being delayed. People can start their process at any time. There's no delay.
And then, let's see. People are concerned about the ADU issue, which I understand. Are you aware of whether, you know, the small decrease in ADUs is related to rent stabilization? Are there other factors that would create that? I don't know if you have any comments on that either.
Jeff, I don't know if you have any.
Well, there's, yeah, there's.
Well, there's, yeah, there's just too many factors that go into that. I mean, I can speak from my own personal experience that I'm just doing some minor remodeling. It's very expensive for construction right now. Interest rates are high, material costs are high, labor costs are high, so it could be economic. I think the, one thing to remember with the RENA is that it, I mean, I know we get focused on production and the production is important. However, the requirement is that we set the stage. We create the availability of land. We create the zoning that allows for development to happen. So we kind of set the, set the table, but since, you know, the town can't finance 400-plus dwelling units, it's really up to the development community. And in the case of ADUs, homeowners that seek to do an ADU, so it's like we don't build the units.
Other questions, Vice Mayor Blash?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Catrano.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and apologies for my tardiness. Quick question, Jeff, I was able to catch a portion of the public comment. I'm curious, Mr. Egger brought up an interesting comment related to like disclosure about permits or applications or, you know, projects that are underway or at least have made their way to the town and in the past doing monthly reports so that both the council and the public could be apprised of those developments, no pun intended. But I'm curious, in your experience in other jurisdictions, has that been done? And with regard to our special jurisdiction, because the town does things the Fairfax way, how big of a lift would it be to produce some sort of list like that so that we could know what's going on in our town month to month?
A month to month would probably be a lot, and plus, I don't think Fairfax gets, has that much development activity. I mean, I think maybe a quarterly report could probably be pretty easily accomplished. And yet, I have done that in other jurisdictions where we have a kind of a running list of projects that are ongoing and then kind of just a simple table that's on the website that says what the status of these various projects is.
I think it'd be great if there was a quarterly report to that effect, but I'll leave that to staff to talk about the logistics of how that would work. But I think that's a great suggestion from the public.
Thank you. Councilmember Hellman, did you have your finger on the button?
Can I add one?
Oh, okay. We're going back to Vice Mayor Blash.
Okay, I just wanted to also point out that some people felt that they had signed up for notifications of housing element changes or issues, and they felt like they weren't getting those notifications. Is there an active system right now that would allow people to know about changes to the housing element?
We have used, we don't have a formal housing element list, at least not one that's been utilized since Jeff and I have been here. What we have done is post notices to the town's website on the homepage and on the housing element page, and we provide these housing element updates in the newsletter. There was a newsletter that was published last night, and that's where we provided the housing element update.
Great, thank you.
And just a question, I think people are focused on the HCD letter that was February 16th. It's my understanding that there's no requirement that we post that, and HCD just posted it. But could you speak to that, Jeff, how that works? And I understand we posted for seven more days. We've addressed those comments in what we posted, and we just linked to the HCD letter because they just put it up. Could you speak to this, Jeff?
Yeah, there's, again, you're correct. There's no requirement that we post the letter, but we do like to provide the public with that information, but we wanted to do it in the context of our changes. So that's why we posted it at the same time as we did the housing element changes. And there are primarily two kind of minor updates. And again, these are kind of administrative updates. When it gets into the final stretch, like we're in, as far as HCD certification, they get really technical and specific. And so we did make it, and they review it very thoroughly. And so we made an error with our sites inventory where we had classified some of our really small properties as low-income sites. And they were too small to qualify as low-income sites based on HCD criteria. So we had to adjust the sites inventory to move those units, the sites, from the low-income category to the moderate-income category. So that was one of the, one of the changes that we made.
Can I just interrupt you? I thought they were actually a little larger than .5 acre, and that's why they had to be moved. Did I read that incorrectly? I thought that there were a couple of sites that were put that were not small enough to fit in that, and that's why they went to the moderates.
It was probably both ways. It's like if a size, if they're smaller than a certain size, they can only be moderate, and if they're larger than a certain size, they should be low.
Okay.
There was some, there was probably movement both ways. And so, but now the table is 100% accurate, and so that's why we had to repost that information. And then there was a, the other point in the letter was there was some, we needed to add some clarity on how the ministerial review process works, and HCD wasn't clear on that based on our housing element programs. So we had to do some really minor amendments to address that concern as well, so.
And that was posted yesterday.
That was posted yesterday.
And it's seven days until when, the 12th?
Seven days, yeah, seven days for public review until the 12th. And then we can resubmit to HCD after that seven-day period. And then they have up to 30 days to give us, to write us another letter. It's either the good job Fairfax, here's your certification letter, or we need a couple more changes. We think it's going to be the prior. And we also expect that it will get that letter in far less than 30 days, but we, but they, they won't promise us that, but we've, we think we'll get it much sooner than that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions up here? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion? Other than me, please.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. It's about the resolution.
Pardon me? I know.
Okay.
And thank you for this very good report. I move to adopt the resolution accepting Fairfax's annual progress report for the general plan and housing element calendar year 2023.
Would somebody like to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Hellman, seconded by Vice Mayor Blash. Madam Clerk, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Catrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay, now we're moving back to Item 3 on our agenda, which is the receive the mid-year, receive 2023-2024 Midyear Budget Review Report. And this is our Finance Director, Michael Vivret, as well as our Town Manager, Heather Abrams. Heather, did you want to take it away and then move it over to Mike?
In the interest of time, I think I will just let Mike start. Thank you.
Okay, we're not running out of time yet.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, I'm presenting the Midyear Budget Report. In addition to the report that you have in the agenda, we also-
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I just interrupt? Are we posting this? Has this been posted yet? It's online. Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting, Michael.
So in addition to the report in the agenda, I've posted copies of the slides that we're using tonight, so you can follow along.
Okay, great.
So, next slide, please. Great. So first, first, let's do a little background. Last year in May and June, we prepared a budget for the fiscal year. Yeah, our budget year or fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th. The budget that we adopted in July is accessible online on the town's website, as well as many prior year budgets and annual town audits. This budget was over 100 pages of detail, and much of the information is contained in it that I'm often asked questions about. So anyway, this slide is a summary of just one portion of the summary page that I've got on Page 1 in the budget. And this is just for the general fund, or actually funds, because the general fund is actually seven different funds, which includes several income funds for planning and building fees and the pension tax, and three equipment reserve funds for reserving and improving the town buildings, vehicles, and equipment. So as you can see on the left-hand column, this, we started the year with a general fund reserve of about $5.8 million, which is about 45% of the expenses that we had last year. So we refer to this as a reserve level of 48%, 45%. And that, that level, the level set by our reserve policy is 25%. So we started well be, well above the amount that is required to have as a reserve. So we calculated that we receive about $11.5 million in revenues. Actually, this number was slightly adjusted downward because last year, you recall that there was a lot of economists who were projecting that we might be heading into a recession. So we did, did, did lower our expectation of revenues in order to account for them. And we also planned for appropriations, which is the budget term for anticipated expenditures of about $13.8 million. That's in the third column that's over there, our total of appropriations. So we also planned for transfers to and from other funds. The $2.3 million in transfers that you see in the general fund top line includes about $3.6 million of transfers in from five other funds, including Measure F and a few others, and transfers out of about $1.3 million to seven other funds, which includes about $1 million to the CIP funds. And we projected we would end the fiscal year with reserves of about $3.6 million, which is, was a reduction of about $2.2 million in, from the reserves or leaving the reserve level at about 26.3%, which is still above the 25% minimum level. Next slide, please. So just looking at the revenue side of it, the anticipated revenues, the revenues from the general fund come from a lot of different sources. Our biggest source is property taxes, which account for about 54% of our revenues. And when you adjust for the use of the fund balance, we projected to provide about 7% of needed funds. The next biggest revenue source is sales tax, which accounts for about 14% of the revenues. And then we have Measure F, our parcel tax, which provides about $727,000 to the general fund, as well as $63,000 to the CIP funds. Our charges for services-
CIP, Capital Improvement Plan.
Capital Improvement Funds, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
To the extent feasible, let's stay away from acronyms. Thank you, Michael.
Michael, I just have a quick question because I'm trying, I'm reconciling the attachment A with these. Has there been some tweaks since the staff report?
There are, there are differences in percentages that, that come because this particular exhibit is figuring percentages using the fund balance in as part of it. So as an example, in other exhibits, I might have property taxes as 58% if you calculate it based on $11 million of just revenues. But in this particular case, I'm, I'm counting for the entire amount of $13 million, which is what we use to cover all of the expenses that we anticipated.
Okay, but the anticipated revenues should be the same as projected, right? Projected fiscal year '24?
Yeah, let's see. Let me take a quick peek here just to verify that. We're using, I show $11 million on the front, first page that you had there in revenues, but part of the, what's added to that is the amount of, that we're transferring over from reserves, which in this exhibit does not, is not included in the revenues column.
Right, but like taxes is-
Yeah, all of those numbers.
-to-
Yeah, and, and we have property taxes as well as other taxes.
Got it.
So you, if you look down the way there, you see hotel user tax, et cetera, et cetera.
Got it.
Anyway.
Okay, but the bottom, the revenue total is 3.3 on this? 13.3, rather?
13.3, which is the amount of expenses that we've got. So our revenues or sources of funds, 13 million, covers our expenses of 13 million, 13.8 million. So that includes some fund balance amount. So I've counted in this exhibit the fund balance as a portion of it so that you could see the, the pie portion that is amount of revenues or sources of funds that comes from, comes from fund balance.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think Councilmember Catrano has a similar, something like that.
Yeah, just since we have the pie chart up, some community members, when we talk about like all the anticipated revenues, ask questions about like, you know, Measure A parks or Measure A or Double A or Measure B or like the Transportation Authority in Marin and those, those revenues that come to the town when we vote on those things. Are those captured under like sales tax other? Or are they represented here in all terms of revenues?
No, most of those Measure A funds are special revenue funds, not general funds.
Got it. So we're looking just at the general fund revenues?
Just at general funds.
Okay, excellent.
And those are restricted for particular uses and also provide monies to the CIP funds primarily.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.
So the charges for service line that we've got here includes fees that we charge for things like dispatch services that we charge to other agencies, as well as recreation fees and miscellaneous revenues from sales of maps and copies. We've got franchise fees up here and utility user taxes, which represent about 6% of the town revenues. And then we have interest in rents, which comprise about 2% of the sources of revenues that we have. These total anticipated revenues vary in reliability of source. This is important. Some are fairly predictable. An example is that property taxes and sales tax projections have very close numbers that we can use that are provided to us from the county and from other third-party experts. Others, such as miscellaneous revenues, are kind of a thumb in the air. How much are, how much do you think we're going to get miscellaneous revenues this year? We can look at historical trends, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you might get that much. So those, those, those are a little bit more loosey-goosey in terms of being able to project how much you're going to get. So fortunately, we don't have to rely heavily on monies that are in those, in those categories. So, next, next slide, please. So this is the fiscal year '24 appropriations and expenses. So town appropriations or projected expenses are $13.8 million this year. The biggest expenditure that the town funds is for public safety, which is 52% of all of our expenses. And that's for a police department and our contract for fire services with the Ross Valley Fire Department. These categories here represent about 26 different departments in the general fund that are grouped into these nine categories, such as public works and general administration. And this shows all of the general fund categories. So, next, that's, that's the background to, to the budget that we, that, that I'm working from in terms of being- that, uh, that I'm working from in terms of being able to provide a summary for mid-year. Um, this is, uh, this is the good stuff. This fiscal year revenues are exceeded to exceed our budgeted anticipated revenues by about $838,000 or 6.7%. This is in part because the economy has been better than, uh, what we projected it might be. We haven't seen the recession that was there. Uh, our property tax, uh, the general fund expenses, um, are expected to be under budget by about $512,000 or 3.5%. That means that the drawdown of reserves that we originally projected to be about 2.2 million is more likely to be about 822,000. Uh, because of that 13 million, 1.3 million that we're, uh, we have from increased revenue and savings in expenditures. And that should bring reserves up from about 26.3% to about 37.5% when we reach June 30. Next slide, thank you. This is, uh, this is a summary page. It's an overview of the projected 24, uh, fiscal year 24 income statement, which is included in the packet. So you have this, I know the print's small and we don't like to have small print, but I wanted to have this as an overview for context. Each of these lines that's in here totals, uh, the detail lines that are in each of those categories. As an example, department may include 15 or 20 different lines for different elements of personnel, different elements of supplies, et cetera. But the summary total is presented on this page. So you can see, uh, here that the left-hand column is what we have at January 31st. You have that income statement in the packet for this time. Uh, the next six columns project what we, what I, what I expect, uh, to have in, in May through, uh, June plus, uh, adjustments that we might have. Uh, as far as, uh, revenues that we receive after that point that, uh, bring us when, when we adjust for accruals, uh, at the end of the year. Um, the totals for, for expenses and revenues then are in that sixth column there. That's, that is titled, uh, projected, uh, fiscal year 24. And then next to that is the budget that we have, that we're currently working with. Finally, the last two columns that are there show the difference in dollars and in percentages between the total projected revenues and expenses and the current, uh, budget. The next slide, please. So basically, uh, this slide shows the three categories of revenues that comprise 85% of the town's revenue. Property tax is projected to be about $351,000 higher than projected. Um, the town participates in the county teeter program, which, uh, gives us 55% of our, uh, property tax revenue with our December payment. So it's relatively easy to project what that remaining 45% is going to be. Uh, so based on this, I have a very high confidence level that we'll receive this much money. Uh, sales taxes are projected to be based on, on, uh, ongoing analysis of revenues business by business, which are adjusted quarterly and shared with the town by Avenue, which is the town's sales tax consultant for the past many years. And based on the accuracy of their prior projections, I have a very high level of confidence that these revenues will be received. We expect to receive about 70,000 more than we originally budgeted. Um, uh, also highlighted, I have interest revenue, which is, uh, expected to generate another $139,000 more than what we originally budgeted. Um, given our level of funds that are in.
Excuse me, Michael, you said interest, that it's 139.
Yes, that's, that's interest in rents, that's that line there, it says 142.
Is 142.
Of which 137, 139,000 is just increase in the, uh, interest portion of it.
Okay.
Okay. The remainder would be what I expected rents might be higher.
Thank you.
Higher by. Um, so given our level of funds in life and, uh, local agency investment fund, which is our main investment vehicle and, and the interest rates that are in effect as a result of interest rate increases by the Fed, uh, which in turn are reflected in the life rates, I'm confident that this, uh, revenue will also materialize. So, uh, next, next slide, please. So some, some revenues that we're going to get, uh, probably are going to be less than what we projected. Um, I've got, uh, several here fines and licenses. I'm expecting it'll probably be about 30 some odd percent below what we projected. This category includes business licenses, but, uh, the vehicle, what we're getting in vehicle fines and parking tickets, we get money from the, uh, from the court system for fines and that sort of thing. Uh, we're, we're not receiving the level of reimbursements or revenues that we originally expected. That either means people are driving safer or we need to go out and issue some more tickets. So, um, our category for grants from other agencies, I'm expecting is going to be about 40% less than what we, uh, anticipated. Actually, this is not as bad news as, as, uh, you might think. Uh, normally, a lot of these, uh, grant revenues are reimbursements. And if we don't do the programs, we won't get the reimbursement. So it also means that we may have some savings in, on the expense side also. Um, our charges for current services, I'm expecting it'll be about 6% less primarily in that miscellaneous revenue section that I was talking about where I don't really expect that we're receiving, uh, what we had anticipated we were going to expect. So, next one. Um, so also within the general funds, I, I mentioned that there were several funds that, uh, generate income. One of those is the building and planning, uh, revenues that are in Fund Four. Uh, those contribute to the general fund. Uh, so I'm in, I'm expecting that, uh, this will, uh, exceed revenue by 88,000. Now the slide says, uh, 880, that's a typo. Okay, we're expecting that this will be up by about, uh, 88,000, which is about a 14% uh, increase um, in revenues in the building fund. Next one. So.
Excuse me, if, if we can correct that on the posting.
Uh, yes, that's great.
Excellent. Yeah, it may be tomorrow or you guys can work with Christine to just make that one change.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, um, general fund expenses, the expenditures, um, notice I don't call that appropriations at this point because this is what, what I'm expecting will be expenditures at June 30. So our general fund expenses are projected to be under budget by about 512,000 or about with the savings of about 3.5% uh, over what we originally budgeted. Um, most of the departments are, are projected to be under budget as of June 30. Um, there's, um, next one. There are several departments that, um, are likely to be over budget, but, uh, you know, I can't, I can't say for sure. I mean, I don't really know what some of the bills that are going to come in in some of these departments are likely to be, but if I did it based on, um, straight line patterns or patterns that, uh, tie in with what we've had in prior years, I projected that, uh, some of the departments may be, um, over. But I think the key to this exhibit is to say that if you, if you looked at all of the departments that are likely to be over budget, it's less than $50,000. So I'm not really expecting that we need to do any adjustment, given that we're going to save about $500,000 uh, in that, uh, category, in the expense category in the general funds. So I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm recommending that any projected overages can be covered by interdepartment transfers, uh, rather than by, um, additional appropriations at council level. So, uh, some of the elements of, uh, expense, expenses that, uh, we look at here is, uh, uh, the personnel expenses, personnel expenses, uh, represent about, uh, 44, 45% of our budget. Um, this year we've had somewhat higher turnover than we've had in prior years. Uh, this creates a little bit of a problem being able to totally project this. Obviously, if you don't fill the positions when people leave, uh, uh, immediately, there, there's cost savings. But at the same time, when people leave, they do cash outs of accrued vacation, et cetera, which create, uh, expenses in the other, other side. So, um, that's just a, a asterisk to this category that, uh, expenses, uh, in, in personnel hasn't been as steady as what we've had in prior years. Uh, health insurance, uh, expenses this year are slightly higher than what we budgeted. We budgeted that we would have an increase of about 6% as of January. In actual healthcare costs, if you take all of the categories and take who's participating in that and then draw a projection of what our healthcare costs have gone up, it's actually about 9.4%. So, but at the same time, our Delta dental rates have gone down as of January. So there is some offset to, uh, expenses in those categories. Finally, our, uh, capital improvement project expenses, CIP. Um, we budgeted approximately $4.2 million. This is not in the general fund here. This is actually in Fund 5351. We budgeted about $4.2 million for those funds. Um, I'm projecting that we're going to be under budget as of June 30 and that we don't need to do any mid-year adjustments for this. Um, through January of '24, uh, we've spent approximately 1.6 million on CIP projects and that's compared with about 1.17 uh, the year before. So we, we've got a, um, I don't know, is that 50% increase in the amount of expenses that we've got? But I don't think that it's going to reach $4.2 million as of June 30. Um, I think there's a limit to how many, how many projects you can do, given the amount of staff, given the weather, given the one person that we've got, uh, doing overall administration on this. So, you know, we're doing, we're doing better than we have in years past. And I've seen some big projects going on out there, including the sidewalk carving and the curbs and, and, uh, some of the roadwork that we've done. So, uh, I, I think there's a, a good effort being made on that. So finally, um, my conclusion is that I recommend that we receive the report and, uh, presentation and that no additional appropriation is requested, that any department adjustments can come from expense savings and, and revenue, um, increases, uh, in other general fund departments at, at the discretion of the, uh, town manager at the end of the year. So, last slide.
Okay, oh.
Any questions?
Oh, I love that. Um, okay, so I want to thank our town manager, Heather Abrams and Michael Vavret for working on this as well as the team in our finance department. Appreciate all your efforts to put this together. And I think the presentation is helpful, the PowerPoint, so I'm glad that we have that. Any questions of staff at this point?
No questions, just appreciation.
Thank you. Oh, I see a finger.
Thank you. Questions and appreciation. Just, uh, one question really. Um, I, uh, I love the presentation, Michael. I find, for whatever reason, Attachment A, um, which is the projected fiscal year 24 income statement to be like the best thing to just track it all. Um, and I'm curious, I guess this, either you or Town Manager Abrams could, could take this question, but on the expenses, seeing a reduction or a, a savings, I guess, of 3.5% or roughly 500K. I'm looking, you know, you look and see what the delta is or the difference between what we budgeted and what's projected. And there are only a couple that are, that are big. Um, and I was wondering if, um, maybe one, one of you or Town Manager Abrams, if you could speak to some of those, those bigger ones and what the reason was, especially as we are about to go into budget workshop season. So just trying to get more clarity on, you know, climate environment, what, what's the, the reason for the, the significant delta there? Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate that and, um, uh, really appreciate you all hearing this presentation. I know, you know, it's very detailed, but that was the point is really that, um, this is, uh, you know, the A number one area in the town is for us to watch the finances and make sure that, um, everything is going according to plan or better in this case. Um, and it is better in the case of, um, the climate, um, department. We, um, set that up to be able to fund and the, the council agreed to fund a number of projects which the, um, Climate Action Committee requested and which the Climate Action Coordinator was, uh, working on as well as the committee. And, um, what we found is that there was a limit to the amount of, um, spending, AKA work that could get done with just that one half of a person. And so not all of those projects came to fruition. Um, and so for next year, we're already thinking about next year's budget and, um, we need to take that into consideration, you know, will we be able to actually utilize that money, um, in the future? Because we want to budget appropriately, um, and not provide funding that could be going to an, uh, another area that needs attention.
Great, thank you.
Okay, seeing other, no other questions here. Um, I will open it up to public comment and remind folks that everyone has two minutes and thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Council. Um, Michael, excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Very clear. The only thing I was complaining about is that little micro print when you're sitting down there and you forget your glasses, it's kind of tough. But I do have a couple of questions. And first thing I noticed, uh, seeing your chart on the wall, it came to, um, $846,000 for the franchise fees added to UUT. Since a UUT and a franchise fees generally go to road impact fees and offsets, it's never been really defined as to what that might be. That's substantial. With your anticipation that you also included of an additional 120,000 brings it up to $966,000 for a year. I'd like to know what percentage of that went to our road improvement fund. I don't know if you have restricted earnings or you're just keeping to separate funds because I saw 51, 2 and 3. But I would like to know how those funds have been allocated directly for the roads and maintaining those roads, especially if we're going to be addressing a bond that requires additional money. The other question I do have, the services that you have in a different category. So I understand, for instance, if we allow or extend our police department to stand in some of, we will be reimbursed for their time and expense, correct? How is that money allocated back? Is it put back into the police budget to reduce the overall police budget? Or is it put back into the general fund? Because I'd like to ensure that if the police department extends these services for another agency, excuse me, and these funds come back to reimburse us for the police department, I think it only fair if their budget reflects that additional income that reduces the overall budget when it's presented in a report. So if you could please provide answers to that when you can.
Okay, well.
If I can do it real.
No, it's not. Uh, let's take comments and then we'll answer questions.
Thank you. Just say, Michael.
Okay.
Interesting presentation. Frank Egger from The Cascades. So, um, I'm concerned about the combining of revenues in, in, in the various, uh, reports. Where we see a utility user tax and a hotel tax combined. Um, and, and they're completely different and should be listed separately. The 378,000, uh, when you combine the two, it's like mixing apples and oranges. So my question is, what is the breakdown? What was the, what was the number for utility user tax, which we all pay with our phone bills, et cetera? And what is the breakdown for the hotel, you, hotel user, hotel tax, TOT? You know, Fairfax approved a short-term rental law well over a year ago. Um, and we've got Airbnb operating in Fairfax, um, and they're, I guess they're collecting a 10% TOT tax at Fairfax charges for short-term rentals. So my question is, um, how much income was generated by short-term rentals in Fairfax in, in this past six months? Um, another issue of combining, uh, interest, combining, uh, incomes, uh, interest and rents. So I guess my question is, what is the percent of interest our deposits are earning? I think everyone's earning at least 5%. But the, the figure combined. interest earned on on our savings and rents from renting our facilities and and they should be separated so we can really understand exactly what's going on. Then lastly, I'm wanting, when is that 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 vacant position of the police department going to be filled so that we can have two officers on duty between 2:00 and 7:00 AM? You know, it's really not clear from reading the report if that position is filled. I don't think it's filled, but anyway. Thank you. That's my questions.
Thank you. Is there a next speaker, please?
Hi, Todd Greenberg. Nice job, Michael. Great tool to be able to get a concise look at things here. Couple of observations, we might be looking at different data, but I monitor things pretty carefully day to day. I would point out in third paragraph that continued favorable real estate market activity impacting property tax revenues. I guess it depends on what that means to different people. But the Realtors that I know locally said it was their slowest year ever. Now, prices may have gone up for what is sold, but all kinds of different properties, the transaction rates have slowed. Now, that ebbs and flows like a roller coaster with interest rates. Things loosen up and there is a base level of demand. But I would say that there is a question about whether it's actually favored favorable real estate activity that is resulting in that, or actually people being forced from their homes, Stephanie. People are being forced from their homes and that is causing people to have to sell, which is actually increasing the revenue here because it gets reappraised at a higher rate. So if that's your idea on how to raise money by forcing people to move away from Fairfax, well, so be it. I just want to make note of that for everybody. I want to give you two ideas, council members, on how you could actually in a beneficial way increase the tax revenues where you could have funds rather than taxing, spending money to tax people further by doing a scientific survey, which we'll get to later here. You could look at why the psychic shops never open and never doing any sales. Where's the sales revenue from that shop? And that shop affects all other shops?
Thank you.
Also the dry cleaners.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark Vell. I think maybe the business license fee collection has gone down because nobody sent out renewal notices. My wife noticed it and she had to walk over to Town Hall and say, hey, I need to pay my business license. I didn't get a letter. And I guess a lot of people also didn't get their letter and they didn't think about it. I guess if we're in such good financial shape, then maybe the potholes can be repaired like over by the Good Earth, like the big one when you're leaving town unless you're drunk and driving the wrong way. And I'm sure there are many others that are very serious. So while it may be a small step towards road repair, I believe that they're definitely necessary. Actually tying on to the question that I asked before that never got answered. And I know this is just a mid-year report, but I didn't see a breakdown of how much the town has spent on the housing element consultants even in six months. I also did not see an estimated cost regarding how much was spent by the town on rent control ordinances, et cetera. So that's some of the points that I'd like to have an answer to. Some questions I'd like answers to, and hopefully I'll get answers this time.
Thank you. Could somebody push that button so that we don't have reverb in the room? Oh, it looks like we have another speaker. Do we have another speaker? No. Okay, thank you, Michael. Are there people on Zoom?
There is one speaker on Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, you are unmuted.
Great, thank you very much. I just had a couple of questions from the for that finance director. And again, I appreciate the presentation. What caused the use of the, I guess it was projected $822,000 drawdown from their reserve fund? Is that just capital improvements that were the cause of that? Second question, were the appropriations for the housing specialist, are there any breakout expenses for the rent control implementation? Or where would they be located? Or are they, again, specifically broken out where they're located in the budget projections? The other question is why the town council, according to the spreadsheet there, their expenses increased 16.5%, but what are the reasons for that? Can you just give a little more detail on that? And finally, I'm glad that this is a, it's projected that there is a surplus going forward this year. But does that mitigate the need to request any bond money going forward for street repairs and those type of capital improvement programs? Because I'm just concerned about the requesting more money from the taxpayers if it's not absolutely necessary. Anyway, thank you. Love to hear the answers to those. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on Zoom?
There are no other speakers on Zoom.
Okay, bring you back. I'm going to go backwards. First of all, the drawdown of the 822,000, that's been discussed prior when we thought it was going to be much higher. So we're not going to cover that here. That's not the point of the mid-year review. Why has the town council, Heather, could you speak to why the town council expenses went up?
Yes, so if you remember several months ago, residents came and asked for a display for Veterans Day and the town council approved banners for that display and those cost about over $4,000. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's that amount. And because the town council's budget for printing is so low, it, you know, it it shows as a percentage which looks fairly high, but the amount is actually quite low.
Okay, and then as far as the question about, because we have some surplus, it's not really surplus, it's less than what we thought we were going to have to draw down. It doesn't mitigate the need potentially for a road bond because we had that presentation a few months ago and the cost to really fix our roads, which are the worst in Marin, is many, many millions of dollars. So that's, that, I don't think we need you to respond to that. That was discussed a few months ago. Yeah, and I would suggest if there's an interest, you can go back and watch that video or at least look at the staff report. As far as potholes being repaired, unfortunately, there's, there's no, and I've talked to our town manager about this and and our public works director. It's not an easy fix to just fix a pothole. There are plenty of potholes out on Sir Francis Drake that I drive through every day. And unfortunately, once you fill them, once it rains, they're gone. So we're looking at bigger picture type fixes and there is a pretty big pothole near Good Earth. And we may need to at least put some cones around it. But, I mean, I drive through potholes in Kenfield, all over the place. And so they're all over and I think the rains cause even more problems. We're not going to see a breakdown of the housing element consultants in the last six months or the cost of rent control ordinances in this mid-year budget review. Business license fee, I have a business license and I received a renewal letter. I'm guessing that some of them have fallen through the cracks. Do we have, do we know anything about that?
I will check in on that.
Okay, great. I know Susan is really diligent on sending out those letters. As far as comments about real estate not being favorable, I don't think that's an issue for our finance director to talk about. We know that houses, the median house cost has gone up, it's gone down a little bit. And because there's so little supply, houses are selling pretty fast. So you know, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that. I'm not done. Could you please sit down? I'm going through the list.
So as far as property taxes go, there are several different elements that we get property taxes from. One is the annual amount that people are billed. You know, your property tax that you pay in December and in April. But there's also supplemental taxes. Somebody goes and buys a new house, they get a supplemental property tax bill for the difference between what was originally projected for property taxes and what the elevated rate is or decrease can be a decrease of what the new property tax is based on whatever the purchase price was. So supplemental property taxes can generate higher incomes. We also get a real estate transfer tax when somebody sells property. There's a real estate transfer tax that we get half of, the county gets half of. And, you know, those sorts of things can end up generating higher property taxes.
Okay, well, that's helpful. And then as far as filling the police position, that's not something that we're taking up at this time. It may be something that the police chief may want to propose, but at this point, that's not something we're discussing. Interest in rents, I believe the budget actually splits out the interest from rents. This is really a convenience to not go through every single detail, but I believe you said that the interest in that table was 139,000 from the 142,000. So the rents are about what, 3, 12? I'm not sure.
About 4,000.
Okay. And then the breakdown of utility taxes and hotel TOT. Again, this was in the budget, the breakdown, but I also want to say that while we've had short-term rentals last year, unfortunately, the company that we planned to work with was bought by Granicus and they were completely non-responsive. And we had to go with a different company and our staff are just getting that off the ground. So we haven't started collecting TOT on short-term rentals at this point. And then going on to question. I believe when our police do mutual aid with another another jurisdiction, I don't believe we get reimbursed for that, but I'm not sure how that works.
So we have an arrangement with Ross where we provide an officer.
That's different.
Different?
Well, I think, well, we can talk about that. We have an arrangement with Ross where we do provide dispatch and that's specific and we charge for that. Oh, wait a minute, let's see, Heather Abrams wants to answer.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's great.
So we actually do have an agreement specifically with the town of Ross, which is separate from the dispatch agreement. And that agreement is relatively recent. And it was a request of the town of Ross that we support them with overtime hours when they were down so many police positions. Our PD staff was willing to do that. And so when they are down so many positions that we need to support them, we actually send our own officers in their Fairfax uniforms. They drive Ross cars and they provide that service at an overtime rate. And then we get reimbursed from the town of Ross for that. So it's a complete.
And that goes into the police budget.
So what we do is when the officers charge time, that goes to the overtime budget in the police department. When we get the reimbursement, I have a separate line in there of reimbursement. So it's a, it's a contra expense. It's a, it's an adjustment to the overtime expense that we've got because it's actually being provided to another agency.
But it gets addressed in the police budget, correct?
It does.
Okay. And as far as mutual aid, when we provide mutual aid or others provide mutual aid to us, I don't believe there's a reimbursement process for that.
You're correct, and we both receive and give mutual aid very regularly.
Yes. Okay, and then and so regarding the 846K and the utility users tax, what percentage went to road improvement funds? I don't think we have that level of detail.
Utility user tax are considered to be a general revenue. So it's impossible to say how much that we've given to the CIP funds for road improvements, et cetera. What portion of that came from utility user tax? Because it goes into the pot as a general fund revenue and isn't specifically allocated to another purpose. If if the council wanted to take these things and make it a special revenue fund, then you could actually track the monies that you've got in and track.
I think we have enough different funds to deal with. That's my personal opinion. We have seven general fund and then we have several special revenue funds.
So just a, an interesting point, when PG&E raised rates by 25%, we got more UUT as a result. Because our, our revenues reflect you know, 4% of the revenues that PG&E and Marin Clean Energy and all the other utilities that we collect UUT from, and it's not just PG&E. You know, any rate increase that they've got, we're getting a little percentage of.
Okay, and those are the questions that people asked. So I want to ask if the council has further questions or deliberation. Councilmember Kachana?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for for doing that, by the way. That was awesome to just go front to back or back to front, however you did that. One quick clarification, too, just because it did come up. And I've been thinking about it a lot. So just to be clear, we're not going out and fixing all the potholes right now because it's still raining. And as the mayor had mentioned, it's kind of like throwing good money after bad. But that's not to say that some of these like really serious issues with potholes or drivability or things like that, that at some point, when the weather conditions permit, Lauren, our Director of Public Works, will go out with the Public Works team and assess and triage essentially like what needs to get filled as a Band-Aid to get us to, you know, more serious road rehabilitation. Am I correct in understanding that?
Yes, absolutely correct. So the the mechanism for filling potholes in a temporary manner is cold patch and it disintegrates and comes right back out in rain. And so you're absolutely right, that would be throwing good money after bad. And what we are actively involved in is looking at, and you saw that on the 24th of January, the plan to resolve all of these road issues over time, given whatever resources the town has available.
Great. I just didn't want to get it twisted that like, we're not going to fix any potholes and just let serious public safety issues just remain unabated. But if there's a there's a method to how we have to go about it and we don't just go out in the middle of the rain. I mean, I saw our team doing that last year. And, you know, shortly thereafter, when there's more rain, it's all back open again. So just appreciate all those clarifications and congrats on all the good data before us. Thank you.
Okay, so bringing it back to the council, I think this is just receive the mid-year budget review report and thank you very much for doing that. I know it's it's a heavy lift, but it's also a really good opportunity because we're moving into next year's budget. So thank you very much and appreciate you staying with us. I would like to say, let's take a 10-minute break. We've been sitting for a long time. And it is 9:06, so let's be back here at 9:16. Thank you. Okay, moving on. We are going to move on to item five, which is adopt a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement with FM3 for a scientific survey regarding a possible bond measure for road repairs and authorize the town manager to pay for the scientific survey and postcard in an amount not to exceed 32,690. And am I handing this off to Town Manager Abrams?
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, so uh, you'll recall that um, on January tenth, the council directed staff to pursue a scientific survey on the possibility of a bond measure for road repairs. Um, staff solicited proposals from four well-known firms as detailed in the staff report. Two uh, well-qualified firms responded and staff is recommending that um, the town select the lowest cost proposal, which is from F M three. And included in F M three's proposal is an optional postcard, which staff would recommend. Um, if approved, the postcard will be sent to all likely voters in Fairfax with a Q R code to participate in the survey. So that's um, really top-notch inviting people to participate. And then next, F M three would reach out to um, additional likely voters to ensure that there was a representative sample. Um, the council may also want to appoint a subcommittee of two council members to review the survey questions before the survey begins. And just to give you a timeline um, of um, how this would roll out, if you approve, um, the firm F M three would need about two weeks to develop questions. There would be about two weeks of um, conducting interviews, the, the scientific survey, um, about another week of analysis. And then they would present to the subcommittee, if you appoint a subcommittee. And then they would present to the um, full council in May. So that would be um, the community's chance to really see the results and um, participate in that. And then the council would need to decide before August whether a measure should go on the ballot for November. And that concludes my report. Um, if you have any questions, please let me know. And um, we also can bring up the, the F M three folks on Zoom if we need to.
Just a clarification, the postcard, the intention of that postcard is to let people know that a survey may be coming.
So actually, the postcard would allow people to participate by using that Q R code. So it would do both to let them know that there's a survey out there and then um, anyone who wishes to participate could.
Oh.
It launches.
Okay, well, that's.
Are they, are they, are they on right now? Christine, do you see Lucia on?
And while you're doing that, that's the, the, the Q R code answered a question I had is that I didn't see in here what the mode of survey. So I didn't know if it was telephone or um, digital. It sounds like it's an online survey.
Yeah. So um, for the postcard, it will contain that Q R code. So that's an online survey. But they are also going to follow up and make sure that we get a representative sample. So that could be by phone. Um, or uh, even contacting people by text and then um, interviewing them by phone.
Okay.
Does that, does that explain?
Yeah.
So it's multimodal.
Yeah.
So. I'm sorry, are you done?
No, I'm, I'm happy that you're here to some, but hi.
Maybe we could have an introduction of our person from F M three.
Lucia, could you please introduce yourself?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. I'm Lucia Del Poopoo. I'm a senior vice president with F M three research. Um, I did, as in, in my transition to becoming a panelist, I may have missed um, some of the questions and comments.
No, no, we just started. We just. Thank you. So I'm, I'm Councilmember Hellman. Thank you. Um, a question about the survey um, structure or approach. So it sounds like it's both, it's primarily digital and then follow-up um, to close the gap of whatever, you know, segments you didn't reach through phone. Is that right?
Yeah. So um, we aim for a fifty-fifty balance between phone and online mode. The reason we do that is um, giving folks um, multiple options ensures both kind of demographic representation, but just kind of opportunity. Uh, there's mode bias that, you know, you can't pick up on. So having kind of a multimodal approach eliminates that bias while also uh, getting that demographic and geographic representation. Um, and I, I heard the town manager, she explained it perfectly. Basically, we start with that postcard with that Q R code, inviting folks to take it online. Um, and then for the folks who haven't taken it yet, we start with text messages and emails, uh, inviting them to the online platform. And then we also reach out through phone calls to landlines and cell phones. And then, yeah.
And as far as your, you know, scientific approach, you ensure that you get a representative sample in each age demographic, income demographic, et cetera.
Exactly. So yeah, we pull a sample of voters likely to cast the ballot in November twenty-twenty-four from the voter registration records. And essentially what happens is when folks start to respond to the online survey, um, we will see kind of where the demographic balance is and we'll use the phone calls to fill in the gaps. So the end result is representative and matches the profile of the overall likely electorate.
Okay. And have you done a survey for this type of bond measure for this purpose? For pavement? Can you share a little bit about what your firm has done with regard to bonds?
Yeah, we have done um, a wide variety of bonds. So both kind of infrastructure bonds in small communities. Uh, arranging to large public transportation bonds, like we did the BART bond. Um, we've done major kind of sales taxes in L A County for public transportation. But I, I just worked in twenty-twenty-two on um, a infrastructure bond in a small community like St. Helena. So we've kind of done the, the gamut of very large to small.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. That's all for me.
Okay. I think Vice Mayor Blash has her finger on the button.
Okay, yeah. Um, I wonder if you could explain that um, methodology a little more. So you're taking a scientific sample that what is, so I guess I'm kind of confused, like uh, you're going to sample people from voter rolls and, which makes sense. Um, and then what? A select group of people will receive the postcard? And then if they don't uh, do the survey as a result of that postcard, you're going to follow up with phone? Or is there some sort of split where some people are going to be approached by phone first and other people are going to be approached by a postcard that gives them an online option?
So typically in larger communities, we would pull a random sample of um, registered voters. But given that uh, you have about fifty-five hundred voters likely to cast the ballot in November twenty-twenty-four, we would will likely just pull everyone in the community. Um, and we'll send out that postcard. So the postcard is the first thing that goes out. And we'll monitor the online responses that come through the postcard. Then we'll start to send out text messages and email invitations because we have from voter registration records, we have phone numbers and emails from when folks register to vote. Um, as those responses start to come in, again, we're going to keep monitoring the demographics of, and um, ensuring kind of the representation. And then we'll move into the phone call phase last. Um, so it's kind of phased out that way. So there's overlap between the phases. But by phasing it out that way, we can kind of monitor and make sure we're getting a sample that looks like the community.
Okay. So everybody, every um, registered voter, I'm going to assume is going to get a postcard.
Yeah. If you do the postcards, we're going to send them to everyone.
Okay. And it's set up so that they can't take the survey over and over again?
Yes, only one time. And they each, basically associated with each voter is a personalized link. Um, and we know who's taking it. So if they take it online, we wouldn't call them. Um, so we'll be able to track that through.
Right. Thank you.
I just have one thing to think about. Um, the voter rolls in Fairfax. Um, most people have landline numbers and a lot of those are wrong. So when you see phone numbers, you know, since you've done this in L A, we're probably vast majority have cell phones. Um, be aware that you may not have as many cell phones as what you would think on those voter rolls. I've found that. So just something to think about. Um, let's uh, go out to public comment on this item. And thank you very much, Lucia. Lucia? Okay. And uh, remind everyone, you've got two minutes apiece. So first speaker, please.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax. Uh, thanks for talking to us from L A. I, I've looked at all the different firms that were considered here and uh, they do seem to be the most impressive. Um, unfortunately, I'm going to compliment you there, but uh, the town politics here beg me to uh, make some points out. This was discussed as a potential twenty-five thousand dollar expenditure at a prior town council meeting. Now it's coming back as a thirty-two thousand six hundred and ninety-dollar expenditure. That's a thirty-point-seven percent increase over what was discussed previously. Landlords can't raise their rent more than two point something percent. How do you just all of a sudden increase things thirty percent? We just heard about a nine percent raise in insurance. How about keeping a lid on the costs? I've got to keep moving on here. Um, grant applications. Uh, it's talked about ten to twenty-five percent. Typically matching funds. Why can't we use the funds that we have and apply for more grants? How come that isn't being discussed? I'm going to urge you to not spend this money and to not try to tax people. And I'm going to give you a little bit of an advanced look at things that you don't know in this town here. The bond measure won't succeed. People are already taxed beyond belief here. Residents will not be motivated to do a vote campaign. I can assure you, this town council will be foolish to spend this money when they've got potholes that triple A says the average cost of hitting a pothole is four hundred and twenty bucks on your car. Why don't we spend some of our excess money, our excess U U T, this thirty-two thousand dollars on fixing things on a triage basis right now, not waiting for months? Okay.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other speakers in the room?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I do find it entertaining that the council is so readily available to send off a postcard to all the registered voters. And I remember the postcard that all of our voters and residents received about don't use gas equipment. But when it came to notifying the property owners that you wanted to put forth a rent control just cause provision that you were discussing in December and hid it from us until you brought it up in March, that you had no way to contact the property owners to engage them and bring them into the discussion. So you didn't? And here's another example. So I mean, it's beyond dishonesty. You have many means to contact people and you chose not to. Want to cut me off, Barbara? Those are statements of fact that I hope you guys will really consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, please.
Mark Bell. Um, if uh, you go ahead with this, of which I'm sure the council will vote five-zero to go ahead. Um, there are a lot of Luddites in this town. So if you had a email address, oh, I'm sorry, a website address uh, on the postcard, so that people could go and take the survey when they have the time to do it, it would probably be helpful in addition to your Q R code, because I can't stand Q R codes myself. Uh, the other thing that, you know, I've read scientific, scientific, scientific so many times, I feel like a scientist from reading the uh, the resolution. How come no one's discussed how much this bond measure is for? I mean, are, are we talking ten million, twelve million, twenty-four million, thirty-six million, forty-two million? I mean, how much are we talking about? Because I think that that's really a governing issue as uh, if there's going to be any success on this or not. I mean, considering that, you know, you guys dropped the ball, some of you for ten-plus years. Uh, and now you expect the people in the community to basically bail you out. I think we ought to know what this scientific survey, how much is the bond supposed to be for? How much uh, is the town council and the town going to be looking at what that cost is and having that affect their actions on how they spend money in the future? Todd has brought up several times, you need to go into an austerity budget. You need to prioritize. And you need to get the ducks in a row for what you spend money on. We're going to spend another ten thousand on a crosswalk instead of buying, you know, ten flags that we could use every year?
Thank you. Are there any more speakers in the room? Uh, okay, sir. I think you're first.
Hi, Jim Cosgrove, Bay Road. Thank you, F M three. I guess just what I wanted to talk about is that we're using this bond measure to fix the roads. And I'm, I'm concerned on, I saw the presentation that was given by the gentleman regarding the road repair. And I don't know if this is a proper format to talk about how we're fixing the roads. So I had my road fixed in front of Bay, uh, in front of my house uh, because the retaining wall was opening up and um, the neighbor next door. I, and it's nothing against the town council. I begged them because the road was such in such disrepair from construction up the street that the road was breaking apart, the subroad. And so I asked to have the road, the old road pulled out. And this is what needs to be done.
So Mr. Cosgrove, that's not pertinent to this agenda item. It, we had a presentation.
No, no, but I'm talking about the coast, the cost of the bond of what it's going to really cost to fix these roads.
Okay.
And so the way in which we're going about repairing the roads that are in the hillside, the roads are in such disrepair, they're eighty years old, busted apart. And what we're doing is, is relaying asphalt right over the top of it, grinding off the old asphalt. As we have an A D U, uh, A D U and people are building their homes, these, the construction trucks are going to go in there and destroy it. What you need to do is you need to rip up the old road and either or lay down what's called a construction fabric over the road. The road that I was putting in front of my house was fifty thousand dollars the town had to pay. These people had to pay for it. Fifty thousand dollars, two and a half years ago. And I begged for the construction fabric and then, oh, well, it was too expensive. The road's already pulling apart. So I'm just getting at the way in which we're going to fix the road and the estimates that we're doing. I didn't see it on the presentation. And as we have more construction up in these hills, we're going to have more repairs and we're going to pay a fortune and we're not going to do it right in the beginning. That's all I'm getting at regarding how much the bond is going to be for.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And Mallory, if you're the last one, when you're done, if you could press the button, please.
Okay. Uh, all I want to say is it's not rocket science. It's a pothole. I don't think we need to have all these studies and all these thousands of dollars to figure this out. We, we used to do this without all these studies. And the other thing I want to say, I, I have four other things, but I know you're not going to let me say it. So I'm just going to say that when people are talking, you need to be more respectful. And don't treat people like Michael like they're three-year-olds. Okay? If you want respect from us, you're going to have to give some respect back.
Thank you. Are there speakers? Could you press the button, please, Mallory? Okay, Michael, thank you for pressing the button again. Appreciate it. Are there other speakers on Zoom?
There are no speakers on Zoom.
Okay. Uh, bringing it back, I want to, before we have council discussion, I think that uh, Mr. Bell brought up a good point. A lot of people, we have a lot of older people in our community. Um, so I think the idea of in addition to the Q R code, uh, a link to a website is, will be something that people can use should we go forward with this postcard. So um, I think we have to go a little bit back in time and make sure we provide uh, an easier way because, you know, we are a different community here. And so I just take that under consideration. One of the things I want to throw out uh, before we have more deliberation is um, Councilmember Hellman was the one who pushed for this. And um, I also see my colleague to my right, who is a data researcher at UCSF and brings a lot of expertise to looking at things statistically, scientifically. So um, there may be other discussions about who wants to be on the subcommittee, but I kind of in my mind, think this is a nice marriage. If we want to use, maybe that's not a good term, a nice partnership. Let's keep it a partner. But uh, there may be other thoughts. Uh, but that's just one of the things I just wanted to throw out there. So let's bring it back. So let's bring it back for discussion about, should we go ahead? And I see a finger out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm glad I always make you laugh with that.
It's good. I don't know why I just.
Well, you know what? I actually can't see unless you do that, so it's good.
Okay, noted. Thank you. I'll continue. So I fully support if my colleagues are interested in being on that subcommittee to work with FM3 if we decide to go forward with that. But I did have a couple of quick things to Mr. Cosgrove's comments. Just wanted to flag, our January regular meeting had a five-year pavement management plan. And that is where we talk about all of those different possibilities. It's also where we get into the realm of possibility of status quo. You know, like business as usual, what does our pavement condition continue to look like? You know, with an attempt to maintain our current pavement condition, how much money will we have to spend? Because our status quo is not going to maintain or hold our current pavement condition. It's going to continue to deteriorate. And then the possible increases, which, you know, might be a certain dollar amount per year, multiple million dollars per year, which is drastically different than what we were doing five years ago or 10 years ago. But I think that is a great thing for folks to look at if they want to get more concrete information about the different treatments that different roads will need based on road health and the current, I mean, the five-year pavement management plan and the prior, what we call the PTAP, which actually gave us our score. It breaks roads down into actual segments. So it's not like nitty gritty, like each meter, here's your different score. But it breaks big roads down, like let's say Fairfax-Belenus Road. It's broken into different segments and each segment gets a different score based on the unique characteristics for each segment of the road. So I just wanted to flag, like, we're trying to do a stepwise approach here. The first thing is getting the score and getting that report. And then working with PEI and our Department of Public Works to actually bring us those different scenarios, you know, downhill, status quo, trying to keep the current score or maybe increase the score significantly to have similar success to what our neighbors in Larkspur had when they worked with PEI and when they went out for a bond. The other thing I wanted to share, which is a comment that addresses two of the speakers' comments. You know, one is, was sort of hearkening back to my prior language about the triage of potholes. Of course, we're trying to triage and do the work to mitigate immediate threats to public safety for transportation facilities. So the potholes for bike lanes or for sidewalks or crosswalks or for our streets. And at the same time, we are thinking big picture. And I think that's what we would, I believe that's what a group like FM3 would put forward with a subcommittee's support and, you know, guidance. Like what are the different scenarios and what are the different scenarios that different members of the community might be willing to engage with? It might not be a grand vision, it might be a smaller vision, but there's probably some range that would be teased out through a survey, a really well-done survey. I think the other piece, Mr. Bell brought up the, you know, austerity budget concept. And honestly, I mean, I might disagree with my colleagues here, but I've said this since I've been on the council. I think the idea of the austerity budget is actually what brought us to this moment. It's the idea that we had been championing, having the least amount of staff, being really excited and cheerleading about having the lowest paid staff in the region. I think those sorts of things actually hurt us in the long run. It was penny wise, pound foolish when it comes to transportation facility management. And so that's the sort of thing over the last two or three years, we've been trying to rectify by hiring a director of public works and starting to look at using, you know, the reserves that we had built up to 45, 50% and saying, why aren't we able to use that to get the matching grants from the Transportation Authority of Marin for, you know, improving bicycle facilities or improving our sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to reflect, like, I think that this investment that we're discussing tonight is part of a larger discussion that the community has to have about invest, like making a significant contribution, like a generational contribution to the town because of austerity budgets, because of the idea that we said, we're not going to spend money on pavement. We're not going to have a standalone director of public works. And then we had the worst PCI in the county of Marin. And it's, those things are all correlated. So I just wanted to tie all of those different comments together because I think it's important that we're getting the feedback. But I also think it's important to look at what brought us to this moment and why we have to have this discussion. And it's decades of decision-making that delivered us to a moment where we have the PCI or the pavement condition, excuse me, that we do have. And I'm, I think it's important that we do have the opportunity now that we have years of information we've received from Town Manager Abrams, from Public Works Director Embertis and his predecessors, the various interim directors, to tell the community what we've learned and the different scenarios that we have before us and see what people think about it. So I'm pretty excited about this opportunity, but those are my comments for now. Thanks.
Okay, I know Councilmember Hellman had another question.
Yeah, I just wanted to expand on, which I think is a good question that Mr. Bell brought up and Chance or Councilmember Cutrano just touched on a little bit. But just to clarify for the public, this, and for me, I'm sorry, Lucia. So the content and scope of the survey would address, would address price sensitivity, if you will, or the palatability that the public has for X million, you know, in different segments and kind of where it cuts off in terms of interest or support. Is that, is that right?
Yes, it would assess overall willingness exactly for different funding levels, priority projects, which ones are most important, ways of using the funds. So it kind of break out all of the elements of the proposal and understand how the community stands on each of those to build something that reflects the community's interests.
Okay, thank you.
And Vice Mayor Blash?
Yeah, and we did have a discussion of, you know, what different levels of funding might get us in various of the documents that we have discussed in the prior several months. But, you know, I have seen surveys like this and there really is a whole sort of cascading look at what people might find acceptable and what they could get for that amount of money. So I think that, you know, I'd be very interested in being on that committee, but, you know, I have some familiarity with that kind of survey. I did want to note that, you know, it's possible that the public doesn't want to put this on the ballot. And that's okay, but at least we'll know more about what the public wants. And I think I would love to see us do more surveys about, you know, public priorities on different issues in the future. But at this point, you know, I just want to note that there are like 5,500 voters in Fairfax and most of them don't show up to county council meetings. So I think we need to go where the voters are to ask them what they want, to really understand, you know, what the possibility is here. So I feel it's always good to ask people on a broader level, you know, what they want. And let's see, you know, one of the things that I think Councilmember Cutrano talked about that I am concerned about is that, you know, we're kind of, road conditions are going to get worse and more expensive. So then we're just passing on the cost to future councils and future generations if we don't at least make an attempt to address this. And I think we've seen that demonstrated that if we keep spending, you know, $500,000 a year, which is currently what it looks like, that even though we keep doing that to maintain the roads, it's not enough to bring, they're actually going to go down in quality. And even though we keep spending, unless we spend a certain amount, I'm also very concerned about our ability to get a match, to start addressing some of the issues with Belenus Road, which is going to be an extremely expensive endeavor, no matter how you look at it. You know, it's an old road that was put up there before. I think people really realized it was going to become a heavily utilized road. If you listen to, or if you've ever heard or looked at that book called The Belenus Fairfax Road, it was written by a local gentleman. That road has slipped and slid and fallen for, you know, a very long time. So that is something for me that would be very important to address. And if the voters were willing to help with that, that would be wonderful because we will need to have some matching funds to address that if we are able to get this grant in conjunction with the county. I did want to ask, let's see. You know, somebody asked, why can't we just apply for more grants instead of?
Let's keep on the topic. I don't think we need to address every issue that was brought up.
I just try to be responsive to the things that people ask. And I thought that was a legitimate question.
I think we discussed that at the previous meeting when we talked about our road plan, et cetera.
Sure. So I did also want to mention that I do think that, you know, this will be, there will be more discussion about methodology futures. So we don't need to hash it all out now, but I do think the suggestion that we include, you know, a shortened web link as well as the QR code is good. I know that a lot of the older folks in these know, use flip phones and they're not going to be scanning a QR code. So however, we can make it accessible for the different types of users we have in our community would be great. Thank you.
Okay, I want to mention that I was first dubious about the postcard, but I thought we were just going to be sending out a postcard to let people know there would be a survey. But I like that this will be dual function. So in essence, there might be several folks that would go ahead and just take the survey. And so I think that's a good idea. I also think, I want to thank our town manager for going out to so many companies. And at the time, we estimated $25,000. That was the best estimate you had. And after going out to companies, we found that another company would have even been more money. So I think this is, you know, in the past, when we've done parcel taxes, sales taxes, we haven't done these surveys. And I think those were pretty modest and I helped run a few of those. This is something that is a much bigger lift for everyone. I think the ranges will be really important, the different scenarios. And I think this is, we may very well find out that there is no appetite for this. But I think that will inform us for the future. And we'll have to go back to the drawing board. But we may also find out that there's an appetite for part of it, some of it. And I think, given that this is, this is a pretty big magnitude. This is very different from Measure F. This is very different from Measure C and D. And so I think it is worthwhile effort. And I want to ask, I think it's a good idea to have a subcommittee work on the survey. And I don't know if others here would be interested in being on that subcommittee. I had just thrown out my ideas because I think Liesel has so much background in this area that would be beneficial and because Councilmember Hellman originally pushed us to go in this direction. But there may be others who have an interest and if so, speak now and we can discuss it.
Well, I have had an interest in it, but, and have some background in it, not this type of surveying. But I think it makes sense if both of these council members are interested. It sounds like they are. I think that that would be a good.
Well, Bruce, as always, you're very gracious and we really appreciate that. So, oh, I see a finger.
Can I ask two quick questions of staff? One, the first one is this mention of 25K. I just want to clarify that the bid that came back was, was it 27,500, right? 27,500. And then there was an additional amount on top related to the postcard that was, that we could take or leave, right? So just want, I'm correct in understanding that it was, that that's the way it works?
Yes, you're absolutely correct.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. The other thing, I had reached out, Town Manager Abrams, with regard to the resolution. I was hoping that, I appreciate, well, one, I do love the staff report. I like the way that you have approached it and I appreciate the hyperlinks to each of the different contractors or service providers. The one thing I had a question about with regard to the reso is we mentioned that the town is ranked lowest in Marin on the pavement condition index. But I would appreciate, in addition to that, that statement, if we could formally state what that, what our number is. So we have like a quantitative baseline that we can look at. Because another community might fall to be the lowest, but that doesn't excuse us from addressing the fact that it's at 55 out of 100. And I didn't know if there's, if you contemplated an easy way to include that in like the second whereas or something like that.
Why don't we do this? Let me just interrupt you and just say the town is ranked lowest in Marin County on the pavement condition index, PCI at 55, comma.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, the one thing I had thought was whereas the town is ranked 55, comma, lowest in Marin County, comma, on the pavement condition index. But yes, any of them.
I love that.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, rated.
So the town is rated, comma, 55, comma, lowest in Marin County on the pavement condition index, et cetera.
Yep.
Okay, love that. We've made those changes. So with that, I'd like a motion on the resolution and the subcommittee, please.
I'm happy to make that motion.
Love that.
Okay, so I would make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement with FM3 for a scientific survey regarding a possible bond measure for road repairs and to authorize the town manager to pay for the scientific survey and postcard in the amount not to exceed $32,690. And to establish a subcommittee consisting of Councilmember Hellman and Councilmember Blash to support the survey process.
Friendly amendment?
Sure.
With the amendments to the resolution?
Yes, with the amendments to the resolution provided just now.
Would someone like to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Cutrano, second, Vice Mayor Blash. Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Thank you. I want to mention that Councilmember Hellman is quite ill, not contagious. And she has mightily stayed, but cannot stay any longer. We appreciate her staying with us for as long as she could and wish you well. Thank you. And let's see what time we are. We are at 9:55.
Can I like proactively waive the 10 o'clock rule?
Well, you can make a motion to do.
Yes, I would make a motion to waive the 10 o'clock rule.
Okay, all right. And Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Press on.
Councilmember Cutrano.
What did he said? Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay, with that, we're moving on to the consent calendar. I want to mention that there's a separate consent calendar with two items that will take up after this consent calendar. That was part of the special meeting. So the council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action vote. In the alternative, items on the consent calendar may be removed by any town council or staff member for separate discussion and vote. Public comment for items on the consent calendar happens once rather than after each individual item. During the public comment period on consent items, speakers may comment on any items from this section of the agenda. And I'm going to change this to say each speaker will have up to three minutes and may only speak once. So Madam Clerk, if you could set the timer for three minutes. And before we go to the public, I'd like to ask if any council members have any questions of staff or want to pull something. And this is just what we have in consent on the regular agenda, not the special agenda. Okay, so with that, let's go to our first speaker, please. Michael.
Before I take my time, I didn't see the.
Before I take my time, I didn't see the second consent calendar. And is it three minutes for both? And where would I get that?
We're going to talk about that when we're done with this.
Okay, so that's after this?
That's after this. I'm doing that separate, and those are two items.
Okay, so it's not part of this three minutes?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so if I may, I'll restrict this really to tonight that, yes, I don't like consent calendar. And I think that it would show much more confidence by the council if you engage your community and you accept it as, not by law, but many different groups do, that you could actually pull something off. It's contentious and be discussed. So I think that that certainly give a great amount of confidence from the general community. Specifically, tonight, I would like to talk about for your, I guess, reading by, or your passing by second reading, or passing second reading for the Just Cause Rent Control starting. I found it really entertaining tonight. And Liesel has been the most responsive, so I'm not trying to throw Liesel under the bus. But like, for instance, when she said, hey, for this whole engagement for the roads, we want to reach out to all the voters, we want to send these cards. But what happened to the, the Just Cause Rent Control, that you guys couldn't reach out to anybody? And specifically to that, these expenses that, again, you're putting on to property owners, but you limit the ability of the property owners to say, hey, we're all a community. We're going to take these extra expenses and share them with the people that are living on property. You're taking that away from us. So in some sense, like, don't use your gas powered equipment. You can send out a card to everybody. But when it comes to sending out something to the property owners or people that are involved with any sort of housing provisions here in Fairfax, you refuse to take it out. You falsely say that you don't know how to do that. But every other way that we discuss, you are eager to send off something for that participation. And I really wish you guys would think that these additional expenses that you're incurring for all of us, whether or not they're necessary, whether or not they're necessary at this time, should, really should not be capped from one specific industry or one specific place. Because that means you're really disproportionately putting that burden on one group of people. So for instance, Chance, since you don't own a piece of property, you can vote all these things you want. But then it comes down to the person that's providing that housing to you, that you're really impacting them disproportionately for your benefit. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Michael. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Todd Greenberg. I concur with what Michael McIntosh just said. We've got 12 items packed consent calendar. Once again, thank you for that extra minute, Barbara. But that's still only 15 seconds per item. I'd like you to pull items number 10 and number 15. Number 10 is adopt a resolution authorizing town manager to purchase an outfit, one police car. That deserves more than 15 seconds. That should be a hybrid, not an EV, as I mentioned before. It affects number 11, which is adding extra charges to add EV chargers. If you had a hybrid, maybe you wouldn't need the extra charger as much. You need to focus on cutting costs, not spending more money and looking to be efficient allocators of capital and looking at ways to increase your revenues without harming the people of this town and without increasing the cost of housing. Number 15 is bringing the cost of housing here. The second reading of an ordinance where you're looking to amend the rent stabilization program so that people have to pay $1,000 per hearing on a $2,000 a month rental. That's 4.7%. Who is paying that rent increase that's totally out of scale? Somebody's got to pay that, Chance. Liesel, you're increasing the.
Please stop calling out council members. Just make your comments.
You're increasing the cost of housing by your policies in so many different ways. And yet you don't want people involved that you are willing to try to dip into their pockets and spend money on postcards, as Michael said, in other ways. It's unfair. You've got an agenda that is harming the whole town and increasing the cost of housing for tenants and for homeowners. And it's making people move away. Connect the dots, please. Pull 15, don't do this. Also, it's not, 15 earlier in the first reading was not an honest presentation of the cost. You, that staff report hid $209,000 in a housing specialist. It wasn't presented to the public. You had to understand and follow it. Most people don't want to have anything to do with these meetings, don't show up, not because they're all fearful. They're just all tired of all this. Completely tired of getting stiff armed and having their pockets reached into for more and more and more money. How do you possibly, do the math. It's basic math. You're costing everybody a lot more money. Don't approve item number 15.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in the room? Seeing none, I'm sorry, seeing none. Are there speakers on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, bringing it back to the council, would anybody like to pull any items? Based on what we heard?
No. But I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
To approve the consent calendar.
I second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay, we're moving on now. Michael, you had asked. So there's a special meeting that I opened at the same time as the regular meeting that has two items on consent. And I would first ask if any council members would like to pull any of these items or ask a question about them. I want to thank Councilmember Cutrone for bringing forward the earmarks, request for earmarks. And I guess I want to thank myself for working on the AT&amp;T landline issue and writing the letter. But anybody have any questions, comments, or, oh, I see a finger.
Yes. Well, also wanted to give thanks and also on the AT&amp;T letter. And just for the other council members that weren't aware, coincidentally, this actually came up at our recent Emergency Preparedness Committee meeting. So there were discussions about this at an advisory committee. It wasn't a recommendation to you, to my knowledge, because there was no action at that committee. But it just, coincidentally, people brought it up for discussion at our Emergency Preparedness Committee meeting. And then the other thing, I just had one mistake I made, which is in the draft letter for item two on consent.
You mean the Senator Feinstein?
Yes.
Yeah, I think a few of us caught that.
Great, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we.
We will correct that.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Okay, and I want to thank Alexander Binick, who lives on Meadowway. I'm sorry. Yeah, Meadowway. And he brought, I was aware of the AT&amp;T landline issue, but was feeling it was a fait accompli because CPUC seems to love everything telecommunications. And PG&E does. But I'm glad Alexander brought it to my attention. And staff were so willing to create a special meeting so we could move forward with this. So with that, I'll give three minutes on this, even though it's only two items. But if anybody in the room would like to speak on either item, go ahead, or both items. Because you have three minutes total. I'm not going to read the whole consent calendar spiel again. Okay, thank you, Todd.
Hi, Todd Greenberg. Consent calendar here on the special town council meeting notice. I'm, maybe I missed a page, but it says consent calendar and there's nothing on the rest of the page. Maybe it didn't print out, maybe it wasn't on there.
It's on there.
I probably have a bad copy.
I printed it offline. Thank you.
Okay. So is it just consent calendar or can I move on to these items? Are these items on?
These are two items on consent.
Oh, both items for the special meeting are on the consent.
Yes, correct.
Now I understand.
Okay, great.
So I actually have to applaud you for once. But I know you can't applaud here because it's against the rules. But I'll verbally applaud you for actually taking this up with the CPUC and landlines. And I've spoken with one of, I can't name a council member now, apparently. Another violation of my freedom of speech. But one of you is still here, has actually done some work on it. Had some communication with me. So I applaud that council member's efforts. This is really important, particularly for seniors. So thank you for writing this. And I hope that you lobby strongly for maintaining landlines. Number two is, that was related to AT&amp;T. For anyone who's listening, AT&amp;T wants to remove landlines. And this is a letter to the CPUC that I'm thanking the council for. Item number two is for a request that the town send a letter to federal representatives supporting the county of Marin's $2.5 million congressionally directed federal spending request, or directed spending request for the Fairfax Center and Summer Children's Center. And there's a nice detail from the county on how the money is going to be spent or, or what is needed. I have a question, though. Doesn't make sense to me, given what has been discussed so far. Might be nice for the, the rest of the town to know and anyone who's donating money to the children's center or wants to help them out in any way. Showing a $2 million cost for the property. As I understand, the property is appraised at $3 million. And RVSD has a fiduciary duty to the rest of its people that they represent. So I'm unclear how $2 million, and here's why it's not $3 million. Maybe somebody can shed a light on it.
Thank you. Another speaker in the room? Michael, didn't you already speak? I'm sorry, Todd went first. I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Oh, not a problem.
Okay, go ahead.
Actually, I had to pause and think. I didn't think I did.
I thought you went first. Okay, let's go.
All right, but thank you. I also would like to applaud you guys for the item number one. I think just because of cost taking that away. I understand that the regulations, no individual carrier wants to be the sole provider because of liability, and that should be distributed to all the people that have contracts since they come into all our communities and we're giving them access to our roads and our general utility infrastructure that we've already collectively paid for. So I think they should all have to bear a part of that cost. The second part is the Fairfax Children's Center is a great organization. But I think the perception that Fairfax is getting involved when a council member is a paid consultant is really a bad form. I think that Fairfax might want to step this one aside and not get involved. Because if you have a council member that's also a consultant and you're directing things, and maybe they're also part of a different agency that gets things done with our public funds that maybe shouldn't have been, and they all benefit a private corporation. It doesn't look good. It's just one of those things that doesn't pass the sting test. So I would really consider, not just here, but even going forward, if there is a good cause that we want to support, maybe we can get somebody else to champion it. So our name is not directly associated if somebody is truly being paid to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in the room? Oh, thank you, Michael. I just want to say that I'm championing this and I am not a paid consultant. Councilmember Hellman is doing some work for the children's center and has recused and has not been part of any of these discussions. So are there speakers on Zoom?
There are no speakers on Zoom.
Okay, bringing it back. I would like to ask for a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion. I also just want to state, you know, the, the way that this item came forward was through conversations with the county of Marin and the county of Marin looking for support from the town of Fairfax, knowing that we have already supported in numerous types of ways the Fairfax Center and Summer Children's Center. And I also wanted to, on the record, thank Stephanie Hellman for her work in that, in that endeavor as well. She's, she's been a critical linkage in making all of this possible, including working with the feds to, to get some significant money. So just wanted to put that out there as a thanks. But yeah, happy to make a motion on consent here.
Okay, go for it. I'd like the motion.
Yep. I'm happy to authorize the mayor to send a letter to, oh, whoops.
Just the consent.
Just make a motion to approve the consent calendar for the special meeting.
Okay, I second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay, future agenda items, is there anything specific that anyone wants to bring tonight? I would just say that I've talked to the town manager about maybe in April having a report on where we are on our stormwater work from a comprehensive perspective and looking at big picture, where we are, some of the specific, there were a couple of little projects tonight, but how we're looking at this big picture, because we want to spend the ARPA money on it. And also in May, I've asked if we can, maybe May is not the right time, but to do a comprehensive overview of the bridges work. That's huge projects. And let's see where we are on those. But moving on to council reports and comments, all of those are in writing with the exception of Councilmember Cutrone, who was not able to make the date. I think we're okay unless there's something very short you want to highlight.
No, there's nothing urgent. And it's just going to be a very long council member report from me in April. Because I did submit it, I just submitted it after the, the Wednesday deadline. And so it's, it'll just be packed for, for April with both March and April.
Okay, well, we know that our, our Madam Clerk runs a tight ship. And Bruce, did you have something?
Yeah, I'll just take this opportunity to, to thank Fairfax resident, who is the, has been for a number of years, the manager of the Marin Center on mosquito and vector control district. And who is in his last month in that job now. He has been by, there is just absolutely no disagreement that he has been an absolutely fantastic manager. And that, just wanted to acknowledge that and to thank him for his service. And he, he does live here in Fairfax and is a wonderful.
Do we want to mention that it's Phil Smith?
Yeah, Phil Smith.
Thank you. He's been, he's come to a few meetings. And I understand he's done an amazing job for so many years. So he deserves a rest.
He's, yeah, he's, he's taking a rest.
Okay, we're not taking comments on this, Michael. We're not taking comments on this, Michael.
No, this, we're just, we're just.
Just a.
Closing the meeting here at this point.
No, that's all right. Town managers' report.
I will make this brief. Thank you all for acknowledging Sean Yora. I want to bid him a fond farewell and, and hearty thank you. He is moving to a regional agency and expanding his impact. So we love to see that when staff members work hard here and then take it even further. That's really wonderful. Also, our joint application for federal raise grant with the county of Marin for Bollinas Road has been submitted. And as I'm sure you saw in the newspaper, the tour with Congressman Huffman was very promising. So we're very hopeful on that front and hoping to move forward there. DPW is working on engineering and design for that townwide slurry ceiling of various roads throughout the town. And we can expect to see that project start to roll out once we have dry weather and we're in the new fiscal year. And then just wanted to remind you all that we will have upcoming an annual council retreat and annual budget process. So something to look forward to there. And that's one of my favorites. And we'll schedule those meetings soon. And so with that, I'll bid you good night.
Okay, and luckily, we don't. Okay, and luckily, we don't have to adjourn in memory of anyone at this point. So I want to thank everyone for coming on Zoom and in person. And we will see you April 3rd. Thank you.